This is Jason Anderson and I am calling this regular town council meeting to order. It is currently 7:00 PM on Tuesday, June 14th. At this point, we're going to open up the public hearing. And the public hearing is on items... 14A, consideration and action on a resolution to authorize a town manager to expend funds under the American Rescue Act funding. Anyone that would like to come speak to this, please come up to the podium, state your name and address.
If I may, Chairman, we did not receive any public comment for this public hearing. The public comment we received was for the regular meeting.
Would anyone like to speak to this item? Last call for public comment during this public hearing for item 14A. Seeing none, we'll move on in the agenda. Next item up is prayer. Mr. Wood.
Heavenly Father, again we seek your wisdom as we continue to serve the great people of this town. We ask that you would provide that to us so that we can make the best decisions for our citizens. We pray this in your holy and precious name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next item up on the agenda is item four, roll call. For roll call purposes, all council members are in attendance. Move on to item five. Items five A, B, C, D, and E, adoption of minutes of previous meetings. Five A, special town council meeting, April 12th, 2022. Five B, special town council meeting, April 14th, 2022. Five C, special town council meeting, April 19th, 2022. Five D, special town council meeting, May 3rd, 2022. And five E, regular town council meeting, May 10th, 2022. Can I get a motion to adopt these?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made by Mr. Grandowski, seconded by Mr. Kattula. Discussion, comments, corrections?
I found one omission on the regular town council meeting for May 10th. Page 473. It starts off with number two, the prayer by Mr. Wood. It doesn't have the call to order or the heading is missing. Thank you.
Any other comments, corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We'll now move on in the agenda to item six. Six A, proclamation recognizing June is post-traumatic stress syndrome month, I'm assuming. It's missing a word at the end.
Proclamation for post-traumatic stress disorder, PTSD awareness month. Whereas post-traumatic stress disorder, PTSD, can occur after a person experiences trauma, including but not limited to the stresses of combat, bombings, child abuse, sexual assault, accidents, and major terrifying events, and affects approximately eight million adults in the United States. And whereas PTSD is associated with chemical changes in the body's hormonal system and autonomic nervous system, and is characterized by symptoms including flashbacks, nightmares, insomnia, hypervigilance, anxiety, and depression. And whereas in the United States, 6.8% of adults will experience PTSD in their lifetimes. Veterans are at higher risk of experiencing PTSD. PTSD affects men, women, and children. And whereas PTSD is treatable, many cases of PTSD remain undiagnosed and untreated due to lack of awareness of the condition and the persistent stigma associated with mental health conditions. And whereas raising awareness of this condition is necessary to remove the stigma and to encourage those suffering to seek proper and timely treatment that may save their lives. All citizens suffering from PTSD deserve our consideration, and those who are affected due to their wounds protecting our freedom deserve our respect and special honor. And whereas in 2014, the United States Senate designated this month of June as PTSD awareness month, now therefore be it resolved that the Killenly Town Council does hereby recognize June 2022 as post-traumatic stress disorder awareness month to bring awareness to those with PTSD and to encourage people to reach out to their fellow citizens to provide support and remove the stigma associated with this disorder. Killenly Town Council, Jason Anderson, Chairman, dated at Killenly, Connecticut, this 14th day of June 2022. Next up on the agenda is item 6B, proclamation for National Dairy Month. Whereas dairy farmers have contributed to the development and well-being of Killenly since the earliest days of our town, and whereas in 1939, June became National Dairy Month by the National Dairy Council promoting not only milk but cheese and yogurt. Whereas the Dietary Guidelines for Americans, DGA, proposes three healthy eating patterns and dairy foods are part of all three. Dairy foods are highlighted for providing three out of the four nutrients that typically are lacking in the American diets, calcium, potassium, vitamin D. And whereas the importance of dairy's unique combination of ingredients contributes to the prevention of heart disease, obesity, high blood pressure, diabetes, and osteoporosis. Dairy is important for building strong bones and teeth. And whereas farming is often a generational tradition in which 98% of dairy farms are family-owned and operated, many farms struggle in the economic times. There are more than 1,500 fewer dairy farms nationwide this year compared to last year. And now therefore be it resolved that the Killenly Town Council does hereby recognize June 2022 as National Dairy Month. We appreciate the dairy farmers and their families and their unwavering dedication to our communities and the farming industry. Killenly Town Council, Jason Anderson, Chairman, dated at Killenly, Connecticut, this 14th day of June 2022.
Next up on the agenda is unfinished business for town meeting action, which I believe we have done. We'll move on to item eight, citizen statements and petitions. Ms. Claudia, I believe we had two?
We received three written public comments for this section. The first one is from Rena Mason, the owner of Tonk City Revival, and she sent her comment was in support of the Wyndham, Talon, 4-H Camp dam project, which would be under consideration for ARPA. The town council received that. The next one is also from Jane Ryder, who is the president of the 4-H County Foundation in support of the Wyndham, Talon, 4-H Camp's ARPA application. And the last one is from Jane and Ronald Smith at 91 Reynolds Street in support of the Wyndham County 4-H ARPA application for consideration.
Thank you. If anyone here would like to make public comment, now is the time. You can speak to any items, whether they're on the agenda or not. You can come up to the podium, just state your name and address, please.
Norm Farron, Squaw Rock Road, Danielson. Hello, town council members. A few meetings back, I came in front of this council to express concerns about the outrageous behavior of town council member Ann Ed Grandowski at Board of Education meetings. Unfortunately, he arrived late that evening and was not present to hear this in person. Since then, he has attended another board meeting and his behavior at that meeting was even worse than it had been at previous meetings. Again, how can a longtime town council member not know how to conduct himself at public meetings? Does he know and he just feels that the rules do not apply to him? Are you an entitled individual, Mr. Grandowski? Again, shouting out from the audience, disrupting this proceedings of other town elected bodies is your right somehow? As I stated last time, Mr. Grandowski came to one meeting, misses sign up for public comments by close to an hour, so knowing full well the procedure, went over to the recording secretary's desk, disrupting her and her duties, took the sheet, and attempted to sign up for public comments. When he was told that the sign-up period was long over, he proceeded to yell out to BOE membership as he angrily left the room claiming that we don't properly post the rules. Again, Mr. Grandowski, you are not familiar with the BOE meeting rules? You are under the impression that sign-ups last all night and that there is no time limit whatsoever? The second instance involved him yelling out to us, myself in particular, demanding that we immediately stop a discussion that we were having and vote at once on a motion that he felt that we were... on a motion as he felt that we were not following Robert's rules. Really, Mr. Grandowski, is it your impression that Robert's rules allows for members of the public to yell out their demands from the audience and disrupt meetings? Two BOE meetings back, he attended with his wife. The vice chair, Mrs. Martin, asked his wife about her treatment of one of the town council members at another BOE meeting. Mr. Grandowski immediately jumped up out of his seat and started yelling at Mrs. Martin, disrupting the meeting once again. The two of them spent the next minute or so yelling, including some threats. They might have a different altered reality version of the events, but fortunately, it's all on video and available at the Killenly Schools website for all to verify. We of the Killenly Board of Education are not going to continue to tolerate this. While Mr. Grandowski is not the only individual that feels that he can do whatever he wants at BOE meetings, he is the only one on this council. This poor conduct really needs to stop. Thank you for your time.
Lynn LaBerge, 28 East Franklin Street. I see that there's going to be a change in operations at the transfer station, and the question I have is one I had before when I was on the solid waste subcommittee. Information that was given out at the transfer station is not given out to the customers. So is... and I can tell you right now, my recycling bin's full, my stuff goes in the trash, and nothing's checked. So you might want to, you know, check to see if they're going to come up with any kind of a procedure. I know it might be difficult for them, but this isn't the first time that I've seen that something's happened at the transfer station, but regular customers aren't notified.
Thank you for that. Is there any more public comment? Last call for public comment. Seeing none, we'll move on in the agenda. Next item up is item nine, council and staff comments.
If I can address the comment with regards to solid waste. So the town contracts with Willamantic Waste to do the operations of our transfer station. We don't contract with Willamantic Waste to provide curbside service to townwide residents. They are responsible for any communication to their customers and any change or educational information with regards to that. The town is ultimately responsible for what occurs at the transfer station, which is why we need to be cognizant of any operational changes at that site. That being said, we are trying to work with my engineering department and will be bringing to the solid waste subcommittee some potential educational opportunities or educational material that we want to just share townwide for people to have a better understanding of recycling. While the... anything that is inappropriately disposed of at the transfer station can ultimately turn into a potential fine for the town, which wouldn't be the case at somebody's curbside because the town isn't partying to that contract. That would be a Willamantic Waste thing. We want to start getting more information in about appropriate recycling across the towns. This is really being a hard push by Connecticut Deep, and it's really being pushed because of the closure of the mirror plant out in Hartford. And the lack of alternatives for ultimate disposal of solid waste. So we are going to be trying to develop an educational program. We are going to try and work with Willamantic Waste so that way perhaps they can include it as, you know, stuffer information in their billings. And I do know that they are trying to develop some additional communication. But it is a... it's a different relationship when it comes to customers that utilize the transfer station versus Willamantic Waste's independent customers at curbside pickup. We don't have the same... we don't have a contractual relationship with Willamantic Waste to pick up people's trash at curbside. That's... everybody has their own independent contract with Willamantic Waste for that.
Now, I've heard that Casella has bought up some of Willamantic Waste. I might... I don't know if they bought up everything.
They have. It's Casella.
Okay. Is that going to have any impact on the operation of the transfer station?
No, they've already made the transition at the transfer station. I apologize. It's been Casella. I just... I have Willamantic Waste stuck in my head. They haven't changed all the insignias yet, but it is Casella. So Casella has to work on that entire... and they're a firm that's originally located, I think, in Vermont or Hampshire. So these state laws are kind of new to them.
Thank you. Any other comments? I don't know who was first. We'll go around the room. Mr. Wood.
Just out of curiosity, with that information that would be educational, I think, to Ms. LaBerge's comment here, would that help with the individual at the curbside there? Obviously, the town's not responsible, as you said, but would that education material help with that?
Yeah, so it's really geared to just, you know, kind of refresh what's truly recyclable and what's not. So it's really to try and do a new campaign around what's recycling and what you can and can't put in recycling tote. There's a significant misinformation around the single stream recycling in that, especially when Willamantic Waste and Casella went to one truck that has two compartments in it. People see their totes being dumped into the same truck and they assume that they're all going into the same place. And they can put whatever they want in the recycling bin because somebody's going to sort it out later on, and that's not the case. They're not... a lot of people don't recognize there's two compartments in that truck. And so the driver's actually flipping a switch to, you know, designate that it goes into a different compartment. So that has definitely led to a lot of misunderstanding around what can be put in a recycling bin and what can't... what shouldn't be put in a recycling bin. And the other concern... the other issue is that we have a lot of what's considered feel-good recycling. We see something that's plastic and we automatically want to put it in the recycling bin because it feels good. We think that it's recycling or it looks like it has a little recycling, you know, mark on the bottom of it, and we think it can go into recycling, and that's not always the case. So the Connecticut Deep does have a really great website that you can look up. I haven't found a thing you can't find on that as to whether or not it's recyclable and how to dispose of it. But, you know, we really need to educate people on going and looking up that and better learning what really needs to go into the recycling bin, you know? I think when recycling, the whole concept of recycling came about years back, we were very rigid on what we understood to be recycling because we had to separate it. You know, paper had to go in one bag, you know, aluminum cans in another, plastic in another, and there wasn't as many variations of plastic as what there is today. So it's really about trying to get that general understanding out there. And so it would help those that are curbside as well.
Okay. I think that's where she was going with some of that, yeah.
Yeah, so the town wants to assist in that educational process instead of just landing it solely on Casella's responsibility.
Fair enough. And I would still call it Willamantic Waste because it's been that since I was a kid, so.
Haven't gotten there.
Yeah, I want to respond to Mr. Farron's comments. Well, you were saying that I don't follow your rules, but all you have when you put the thing up here, there's only a little bit of a blurb. You don't have your full set of rules as to what's required. Now, if it would say all public comment has to be in before the meeting starts, I never saw that at signup sheet. During your comment period on the... on your agenda, there's only a small little blurb. So it would be nice if we had all that information or maybe the full set of your rules right up at the door over here so that we would have them at our disposal. Getting back to me following Robert's rules, there was a discussion about the school-based health clinic, and one of the persons on the board wanted to call a vote. And with... I can't remember exactly what it was, but with that scenario, you're supposed to end discussion and call for a vote, and you weren't following the public comment, the Robert's rules of order. So I as Joe Citizen sitting over here, I have some flexibility, and if I think things are not going quite right, I'm going to point them out that the person in charge is not following the rules. And as far as the other issues about my wife and carrying on, that I was carrying on, Ms. Martin, I had... all I said was, "Are you looking at me?" "No, I'm looking at your wife." So if you want to exaggerate something, you know... but obviously, I think there needs to be a lot of... maybe our attorney should set up exactly a nice informational meeting on what Robert's rules are. And if someone's not following them, if someone from the audience can point that out that there is a discrepancy, or who has the authority to call out the chairman that Robert's rules are not being followed? And then with respect to public comment, you guys arbitrarily were changing public comment without changing your rules of procedure or whatever you call them. I'm seeing it now. Now, you brought this out, I don't know, February, March, whatever, and finally, it's just on the agenda now that you arbitrarily changed your public comment rules, but you didn't change your rules of procedure. So it's very... not conflicting, but how am I supposed to know what the rules are when they're changed at the will of certain individuals? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I would have to allow... someone would have to make a motion to suspend the rules to allow for that. That isn't normally something we do, but if there are council members that want to suspend the rules to allow the chairman of the BOE to respond to Mr. Grandowski's comments, I will entertain that motion.
I'll make that motion.
Motion has been made by Ms. George, seconded by Ms. Murphy. All those in favor of suspending the rules to allow Mr. Farron to speak, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Abstentions? Motion passes. Mr. Farron, if you could just come to the mic, please.
Yes, I'd like to respond. I suppose I could just do what Mr. Grandowski does at our meetings, just shout out from the audience whenever he feels like it, because that's what he does. So don't let what he just said influence what those videos show, okay? And about you responding to Ms. Martin, what you did exactly, and I'll... I can recreate what you did. It's on video. You jumped up out of your seat and you said, "Who are you talking to?" That's exactly your exact words, okay? So to try to sugarcoat it or whatever you're trying to do is just ridiculous because it's all on video, okay? And as far as our rules being on the signup sheet, I think that's a good idea. I appreciate that suggestion. However, you've been going to board meetings for a long time, and I think everybody that has been to as many board meetings as you have knows what the rules are. Don't try to pretend that it's just some big mystery that you can sign up anytime that you feel like for public comments. Everybody knows that's not correct, except people that would be new to the meeting. So for their benefit, I think we need to make that change. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I will entertain a motion to move item 15A ahead of item 10.
I'll second.
Motion's been made by Mr. Whitehead, I believe it was, seconded by Ms. George. Discussion. I will just say that my reason for doing this is in consideration of the fact the town attorney is here rather than keep him through everything else we have before we get to that. I'd rather get through this now, especially considering the comments we had during public comment. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We'll now move on to item 15A. After finishing 15A, we'll move back to item 10.
Thanks very much. I guess the good news is that the Board of Ed has separate councils so that somebody else is probably...
Yeah, I mean, this apparently is what prompted my visit this month, and, you know, even though... even though it's kind of in response to a particular incident, I don't think it's, you know, worthwhile to attribute it to that. It might just be something that we probably should have covered, you know, a couple months ago when we did our training on meetings, but, you know, didn't get around to it. So it's not going to be long, it's not going to be complicated, and, you know, I would encourage either questions or discussion, you know, afterward. Basically, it's how members of the town council interact with other boards and commissions in town. And the touchy thing, you know, that you talk about Joe Public, you can be Joe Public, but in the eyes of the town, you're not Joe Public. You're Joe Counselor. And I think there's... that's something that you just need to bear in mind. You don't... you obviously don't forfeit your First Amendment rights to participate in, you know, most kinds of conversations at other boards and commissions or in public forums just by virtue of being a member of the town council. But I think it is important to just bear in mind that the public perception is that even if you say, you know, "I'm here speaking as a private individual, I'm here on my own behalf," the fact that you have to say that to, you know, cause people to figure out, okay, which hat is he or she wearing at this moment? You know, unfortunately, in this cynical age, it almost has the converse effect of what's intended. The issue of, you know, town council members attending, commenting, participating in proceedings before other agencies, you know, the issues kind of fall into two categories. One is legal considerations, and fortunately, there aren't a lot of those. More of them are kind of under the practical civility decorum heading, and, you know, that's where I'll finish up. One of the areas where town council members need to tread lightly is when you are speaking in front of an agency that you appoint. You know, it's one of those things that you probably never think about. You know, you go to a planning and zoning meeting, you go to ZBA meeting, you know, you're just saying what you're thinking and so forth. you're just saying what you're thinking and so forth. Sometimes disgruntled applicants or opponents, um, put undue weight on the fact that town council members have come to those agencies and are trying to influence the decisions. And, um, in one situation, um, the mayor had the power to appoint the members of the zoning board of appeals, and he went and basically said, you know, "Here, here's how I feel about this application." And, um, you know, it was decided a certain way, and then he suddenly removed three of the five members and put in other people who, when they were confronted with the same application shortly thereafter, voted differently. Um, you know, that, that's heavy-handed and pretty blatant, but those, those kinds of considerations where you're trying to influence an agency that you appoint is one where I think you just need to be a little bit careful, um, you know, not to overstep the bounds. I mean, if you go to a planning and zoning commission meeting and say, you know, "I, I think this is a good project," or, you know, "It's next to my house, I'm speaking individually," that sort of thing, um, you know, that's fine, but I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't put my thumb on the scale, uh, in such a blatant way that it appears that the appointing authority is influencing or threatening the members, you know, of the agency to reach a certain conclusion. The other area where you get into a little bit of, um, difficulty is, you know, as a general rule, you know, you still have all of your First Amendment rights. But if you are speaking in your official capacity, um, you know, for example, here or, you know, as a liaison to a different agency, and you start going into areas that are problematic from a legal point of view, and I'll give you an example in a minute so they understand what I'm, what I'm, what I'm alluding to. Courts have found that because that becomes official speech of you as a public official, you're not protected by the First Amendment, and you only have qualified immunity for what you say. And there's a case pending in the federal court right now involving a town close to the middle of the state where, um, there was a, can't remember what the, what it was. It was basically a home for, um, people who were re-entering society, um, after having been convicted of certain kinds of offenses. And the neighbors were very opposed to having that there, and the town officials came down, you know, like a ton of bricks on the organization running that facility. And, uh, members of the town council, members of some of the other public agencies, you know, were speaking freely to the press about, um, not wanting to have these disabled people here, you know, not wanting to have this kind of facility here, and, and they, they really went all in on making sure that this place closed down and went away. And as it stands now, uh, the town is, um, looking at, I think, a hundred and eighty thousand in compensatory damages and five million dollars in punitive damages, and some of the individual public officials are still defendants in the case for the public statements they made with respect to those, um, you know, activities. So, you know, the key thing to bear in mind, and you all behave well, I've seen it, is, you know, when you get into areas where it involves, you know, civil rights, constitutional rights, um, you know, the property rights of people who want to come to town and put in, you know, legally authorized facilities, um, you know, call Mary, call me, whatever, before you start putting out press releases about how you're going to, you know, shut them down, and they'll wish they had never heard of Killingley, and, you know, that sort of thing. Because, um, you know, you can say First Amendment all day long, but it's not going to save you there.
Rich, I have a question.
Sure.
You mentioned that as council liaisons to different boards or commissions, they could, there's, you know, they have to tread lightly on what they're speaking. So some of our commissions invite the liaison to participate in the meeting and give, you know, weigh in on topics. Should they be doing that as council liaisons? I know in the past, council liaisons really just acted as a, "I listen to your meeting, and then I report back to the town council on what you're doing in your meeting, and I bring information that the council has to your meeting, but I don't participate in your meeting." Should they be participating as an active, um, deliberating party within those meetings as a council liaison?
I would say generally, no. I mean, the whole idea of a liaison is to, you know, facilitate communication back and forth between the agencies. You know, "What are you working on? Well, this is something we're working on, we're interested to hear more about it, you know, let's make sure we're all on the same page." You know, not essentially to be an additional member of the agency, you know, deliberating and trying to, trying to sway the discussion. I mean, you know, as is always the case, there are situations where, you know, it's no harm, no foul. But, um, you know, particularly if it's something controversial, if it's something that, you know, is likely to, or, you know, is foreseeably likely to result in some kind of controversy or litigation, you know, it's probably better just to be kind of diagnostic communicator back and forth so you can come to the council and say, you know, "The, the shiny boat committee is looking at buying a shiny boat, and, you know, here, here are the bids that we've gotten, and this is where we want to dock it," or something like that, rather than, um, you know, trying to be an additional member of the agency that you're, you're just kind of helping facilitate communications with.
Well, maybe another question. As liaison, like, um, on some of the boards, uh, like WPCA, they have public comment and liaison. So, and then you're saying if you, if you're speaking in front of a committee by which we appoint, um, so that limits, from what I'm taking, it limits what you can say at public comment? It limits what you can say when you're allowed to speak as liaison. I, I don't know, could you just maybe elaborate a little bit more? I don't want to put you on the spot.
Yeah, well, I'm on the spot, yeah.
Well, you know, how do we handle that sort of thing? That, how does...
Well, I, I mean, if, if you're, if you're the liaison to the WPCA, you know, the, the kinds of conversations I can imagine that you're having is, you know, they're talking about, you know, capital things, they're talking about, um, you know, contracts, they're talking about, um, you know, fees, they're talking about the service area, uh, they're talking about impacts of various developments, um, you know, bring that back to the council and, and where appropriate, you know, update the council on what the WPCA is doing. What, what I think is where you get into problems is, you know, you as either a member of the public or liaison to the WPCA going there and saying, you know, "You really shouldn't be expanding your service into this area because, um, you know, I, I don't think it's a good idea," or something like that, where you're, you're sort of stepping into the role of a member of the commission. I mean, if you have, um, you know, just sort of general feelings, you can share them, but I, I think the, you know, the, the difficulty is coming up with tangible examples other than, you know, the really bad ones that have, you know, led to litigation. But I, I think, you know, just remembering what, in what, what capacity you're there, and also what I was going to get to next, which is basically the perception that you are speaking for the town, you know, so kind of have that planted in the back of your mind, you know, as you're making public comments, because, um, members of the agency, members of the public may attribute considerably more weight to what you say than what you think is appropriate or what, what is, you know, necessarily the case.
But maybe to interrupt you a little bit, but there are, there are circumstances that, whatever I've been on, and my background, everything else that I've seen, um, during, especially during public comment, that's, that's the biggest part that I, that I will bring forward, information and whatnot. If I am more aware, I have a better understanding that certain individuals who are, you know, making presentations at previous meetings, I can't, basically, I'm what I'm getting from you, because I'm sitting on an appointed board, I can tell them, I can't tell these people, "You're blowing smoke, you don't know what you're talking about, and, you know, there's, there's a document that proves otherwise." Because I'm on a town board or whatever, um, and if I can't speak, I would take that as, "Why am I coming here?"
Maybe I can just chime in on, I think what I heard from what Rich is saying is that during public comment, um, you can make your public comment, and you can, um, state your concern or, or whatever, but recognize that when you're speaking in front of a, an appointed, a, a board or commission that the town council appoints, that your comment may influence more so members of that commission. And so you need just to be cognizant of what that is and what that impact may be, um, as well as, as opposed to making those statements during your time as town council liaison. Your town council liaison component, like you use, like you just mentioned with the WPCA. If you're the town council liaison, your time period as a town council liaison to the WPCA should really just be reporting to them what the town council is doing, right?
Right.
And telling them, "This is what the council's working on."
Right, right.
And bringing back to the town council,
Yes, that's...
"This is what the WPCA is working on." But rather making, you know, if you have concerns around a project or something like that, making those statements during public comment.
Public comment, that's right.
But recognizing that, yes, you do, you do walk a fine line as a town council member when you're making statements in front of a board or commission that this body appoints, because you do, inevitably, you have a, your comment could potentially be construed as having a heavier weight, because you are an appointing authority. Is that correct, Rich?
Yeah, I mean, and, and I guess, you know...
No, I, I, that's why I need this, we, we, we need to have this.
Well, I mean, and I can kind of forget the, the outline that I put together, and we'll, we'll just talk, because, um, just as an example, you said, you know, or make an example, you know, eight years ago, you were involved in a situation with the same agency where, you know, whatever the people are coming in with now and proposing either didn't work, or, you know, the, the town or the WPCA decided not to go in that direction for a particular reason, or, um, you know, there's a better technology that you might know about. There are a lot of ways to, to impart that information. And I guess the, the one point I want to make is that you're not prohibited from imparting that information, but you should try to do it in a way that recognizes the fact that people perceive you as speaking for the town, and that, um, doing it in kind of a constructive and a civil way, you know, that you can tell the commission, you know, "Oh, by the way, you know, some of you may not know this, you may not have been around, but we looked at a similar issue back, you know, five or six years ago, and here's, you know, the information we got at that time was this, you might want to look into something," rather than coming out of the box with, "That guy's full of it, he's blowing smoke," you know...
Well, I, I, I don't think I want to say, you know, that was exaggerating, right.
Well, I know.
You're trying to have some, some documentation or something to go along to back up what you're saying.
Yeah, so, and, and doing it in kind of a constructive and objective way, um, I don't think, you know, is problematic as long as it's constructive and objective. Yes?
But that's, what you're saying is often right.
Right.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
So either, either you can, you can make a suggestion, like, say, "Well, you got to put a, a booster pump somewhere," you know, and then you put your comment, "Well, we really don't need that booster pump there, we really should have it over there." You're still influencing at some point, right? So it's, it's, as, to me, what you're saying is, is kind of gray, like, you know what I mean?
Well, I mean, you could say something like, you might want to look into putting the booster pump somewhere else rather than telling them, "This is what you need to do." Um, you know, and just kind of moving it from sewage to general information. I mean, you know, providing information, providing suggestions, providing guidance, you know, that, that's great all day long, but the more and more that it looks like a directive from the town council, the more problematic it can be, you know, particularly if, you know, the bidder who wanted to put in the grinder pump over here doesn't get the contract and sues the town because, you know, undue influence on the WPCA. Yeah, I mean, it, it is all gray. I mean, and, you know, that there, like I said at the beginning, I mean, there, there are a couple kind of fundamental legal constructs, and then beyond that, it's just, you know, more a matter of be, being able to disagree without being disagreeable, recognizing that you as elected officials are, are held to a higher standard, even though it is an inherently political environment. So, you know, it is a difficult and gray situation that you find yourselves in, and I guess all that I wanted to convey was, you know, just sort of have, sitting in the back of your mind, even, that you, in the eyes of the public, are representing the town, even if you say you're not, even if you think you're not, and that, um, you know, you, you need to kind of carry yourself in that way, um, you know, just to basically maintain public confidence in the, in the process.
There, of course, there's always one little exception to the rule. Personally, right now, I sit as liaison to rec. commission, and I think that's, I think it's the only rec. commit, the only commission that the liaison actually is a voting member.
Correct, that one is a voting member, but that's the exception to the rule. All the other liaisons are non-participants.
There's always going to be, so...
Yeah, that's how we make a living.
Neacock is...
Yeah. So... Gray areas and exceptions to the rule.
So, but, I mean, I, I find myself a lot of times to ask my opinion on stuff, and as an RN, and as, as one of my other, my other bachelors in community health, so they'll ask sometimes a lot of my input, and I, I find myself doing exactly what you, "Okay, I'm coming at this, and I have to remember that I represent, I'm talking as myself, but I know I still represent."
Right. Yeah, I think just having that level of awareness is, you know, is, is important. I mean, frankly, you're all trying to do the right thing, and you have the best interests of the town in mind, and, you know, there are just people out there that just will disagree for no reason. Um, and, you know, just try to navigate the landmines and not take the bait and feed the trolls.
Rich, I have a question about the Board of Ed, because they are not, um, appointed by us. That's an elected body like we are.
Right.
I'm the liaison for the town council for the Board of Ed. So, and we've had some very productive back and forth conversations while I'm sitting at the table as a liaison, between the Board of Ed and comments from the, should I, like, change hats and go to public comment for the, for my opinion? Or is it okay to have that back and forth as long as, because I am acting as liaison when I'm sitting at the table? But we've had, like, we had a conversation that went into bullying, and it was my opinion based on my own personal experience. But we had a really good conversation, and I don't think there was anything controversial, but it was my opinion, not as a town council person. So do you see what I mean?
Yeah.
Should I limit that conversation? Um, or is that okay? Because we did not appoint them, so it's not the same level of influence.
Yeah, I mean, it's different, because you're kind of counterpart, parallel agencies. I, I think the thing to keep in mind there is, you know, when, when you feel you can speak as a council member versus when you speak as an individual... speak as a council member versus when you speak as an individual, um, you know, I, I don't think you have to, like, jump up and walk to the other side of the room to, you know, to say, you know, "I'm standing over here now talking about bullying."
I always say, "In my opinion."
"I'm going to stand over here and talk about..."
I do clarify, I always say, "I'm speaking, you know, in my opinion," or, "This is what I think." But is that something that maybe I should limit? Or is that, I don't know?
I, I think as long as it's relevant to what's going on, I mean-
In her role as liaison? So she's giving a liaison report to the Board of Ed?
Yeah.
Um, and you're taking your-
Right, which leads into-
-the information from Board of Ed to back to the council for liaison.
Right, we're going back and forth, and I always say at the end, which maybe I shouldn't, is, "Does anybody have questions from the Board of Ed members?" And then we sometimes have a conversation. Should I not ask that at the end?
No, you can ask that.
Oh, okay.
I mean, they may have count, questions that need to come back here, you know, at the last Board of Ed member meeting, they were asking questions about-
Right.
You know, X, Y, and Z, and-
So just be very careful to clarify, like, if we do get into-
Yeah, just be cognizant of-
My opinion.
Of what capacity you're in.
Okay.
Because that's one thing, was when I was liaison, um, I used to do would be during our town council meeting, um, I'd ask if there's any questions, because there was times when we didn't always have a liaison from the Board of Ed at our meeting, and I'd ask the council members, "If you have any questions for the Board of Ed, when I go to the meeting tomorrow night as liaison, I will present them and get answers for you." So that is one thing that we have done, working together with the Board of Ed, um, to fill in for times when you have a liaison couldn't make it to a meeting, from the other commit, from the other board, or from the council. There is one other thing I really wanted to touch on while you're here, Rich, and it, it does have to do with meetings. I know public comment isn't a right, it's a privilege. Um, it is set up in our rules of procedure. Now, for my knowledge, for Kevin's knowledge, if he's running a meeting, um, or any of the other chair, the chairman of other subcommittees, um, if public is speaking, if you're outside of public comment and you have members of the public who are getting unruly in speaking, is there a hard line where the chairman can call for, I know at first you would, you would remind everyone, "Well, this isn't public comment period, you're not allowed, you're, uh, the time for public to speak has already passed," um, and just ask him to refrain from it if it continues? Is there a fi, is there a hard line where, um, it comes to the point where you say, "All right, we're clearing the room"? Or is, is that a judgment call of the, whoever's running the meeting?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a, definitely a judgment call. I mean, and, and, you know, I might consider calling a five-minute recess before you clear the room, just because, you know, if there are people who are behaving, they shouldn't suffer the consequence of the people who aren't behaving.
I agree.
So it's like, you know, "Look, we're, the meeting is, you know, this meeting is out of control, I'm going to call a five-minute recess." I mean, frankly, at some of the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings that I run, we call a five-minute recess, because all of the people who came for one of the applications are standing there, you know, talking to each other, and then, you know, nobody can hear anything anyway, so we just do a five-minute recess to go to the bathroom and wait for them to go away. But, um, you know, you, you can do the same thing if, if, you know, there's unruliness that's, you know, short of the nuclear option of, you know, having the police pull people out of the room or, or clearing the room, because, um, you know, under FOI, people have the right to attend a public meeting, and if there are three people out of 50 that are being disruptive, you know, the other 47 can file a complaint. So, um, you know, I think I would, I would probably lead with, you know, as, as you said, you know, some heavy gaveling, and then, you know, maybe just, you know, declare a recess so that, uh, you know, things can either calm down or not, and then when you want to be able to pick up where you left off with whoever is still there, you know, with the caveat of, "We're not going to have this continue." Um, you know, and if it does continue, you know, you can either adjourn the meeting or, to another time, or, you know, ask everybody to leave. Um, I'd be really wary about having all of the public leave, just because some people were misbehaving.
Can you just kick out those people that are being unruly?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, one other question I did have, um, with the public comment, could we, or could the Board of Ed, um, have, because we have regular meetings, we have special meetings, could we have public comment allowed? Like, let's say, the council wanted to only allow public comment at the regular town council meeting, and during special meetings, when we're really just trying to get business done and get through stuff, to try and speed up the meeting, could we say, um, "There's no public comment, um, period, but accept public comment by email or mail, um, during that, to try and speed a meeting along if we've, especially, I, I understand it would be more, um, change of rules or procedure to do something like that." But is that something that the council or the Board of Ed would have the ability to do?
Yeah, I think as long as it's not a public hearing, you know, that, that's going on, um, you have the ability to, you know, to, to make your rules, to be able to carry out your business. I mean, hearing from the public is an important part of being a government agency, um, but if you have two items on the agenda at a special meeting, you know, and, um, you know, there's some, some towns I know where, they call them the Monday night toastmasters. I mean, you've got the same people who come to the town council meeting, and, you know, it, it could be an hour-long meeting and 40 minutes of it is public comment from the same five people, you know. If you've got a finite amount of business to do, unless there's a charter requirement or something else, you don't need to have, um, public comment. But if, if members of the public do have, you know, feedback that they want to provide on a particular matter, you can, you can accept that, you know, by email in advance.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, it, it gets tricky, because, I mean, you know, you get into land use agencies where you have, you know, capital P, capital H, public hearings, where, you know, you have to sit there and listen, regardless of how long it goes, so.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Grandowski.
With regard to public comment, it takes big cahunas to get up there. It takes a lot, a little less to come to the audience, and we don't have enough participation as it is. Half the time, there's, there's no one in the audience. So on the few occasions, maybe, where it does get long, um, I feel that I put myself up here, I make myself available, if someone has whatever comments can be, you have your right to be up there. And, uh, I think that's part of what we signed up for. You can go knocking on doors, and you get, you get a perception at that point of view, but once you start sitting at the table and things, discussions change, you, we have to get the public view. That's my, I, I endorse public comment, you know, I'm, I'm, that's my, my view, I, you know. And it's, yeah, sometimes the meetings go on, um, I mean, I've seen a few times, not too many where we've had to go past the 11 o'clock timeframe, but whether or not the public was satisfied, but at least I gave them their chance to speak, that, that's my, 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 you know, I don't know. Again, that's, everybody has a little bit different view, but that's just the way that I look at the situation. But, again, public comment is a privilege, it's not a guarantee. But I think, isn't there something in the legislature that's coming along now that's going to say, "There will be public comment"? I, is, did that pass?
There was a, there was a bill, and I don't think it passed.
Okay, that was-
Yeah, they mandated public comment at all public meetings. I mean, it, it's, it's unusual when there isn't any place on the agenda for public comment, but, you know, I guess somebody, somebody-
Yeah. See, like, like in the council, we see something, but at, at the sewer authority, in the six years I've been liaison and alternate liaison, we've had two people come for public comment. And the option is there, but no, and then afterwards, they'll catch me, "You know about that?" Well, you know, the meetings, I try to, I try to be out there when I'm out and about, like, the meeting is the third Wednesday of, of the month, or the town council meeting is the, the second Tuesday and the first Tuesday, that, you know, "Come on down, I, I, I want to, I want to hear from you."
Yeah, you could have 11 public hearings about something, and that it isn't until the 12th one, when you want to act on it, that these, you know, that people say, "What's going on here? Why wasn't I informed?" Yeah, it, it's a, it's a common problem in society these days. I mean, there, it's just, it's hard to get engagement, it's hard to get constructive engagement, and, you know, everybody's being pulled in so many directions that, you know, it isn't until something takes the form of, um, you know, a flashy and controversial issue that, you know, that, that it gets everybody's attention, you know, and then it's, you know, 80% misinformation.
So, and I think, uh, I agree with you, Ed, there, because I had a citizen today, actually, I was working with him, he brought up some concerns the second he found out I'm on the town council. Uh, shouldn't tell people that. No, I'm kidding. But he brought up some concerns, and I strongly encouraged him to reach out to Mary's office and to come make public comments. So I, I agree with you on that, you know, we, we definitely encourage people to come out, make comments, things like that. Um, I have a quick question for you, and I have a feeling you've really kind of touched on this already, uh, throughout our, our dialogue here. Um, when it comes to writing letters to the editor, things like that, whether it's a endorsement of another candidate, um, you know, we have obviously gubernatorial's race coming up, all, all the other races coming up, uh, but endorsement of candidates, um, or, in that matter, too, town issues that are going on, um, I'm assuming, obviously, like you said, our constitutional rights don't get suspended just because, in fact, our job is to uphold the constitution, um, but we obviously have to tread lightly. Um, so is there anything, when it comes down to either endorsement of candidates or writing letters to the editor about town issues, that you would advise?
Um, endorsement of candidates for offices other than, than town, I, I think, you know, there, there's no real restriction on that. You, you know, you have, you as town council people have no particular influence in that. You may have, you know, you may have preferences, you may suffer the consequences of, you know, picking the wrong one, but, um, it, I don't think that's a situation where, uh, anyone would claim that you were abusing your office by supporting, you know, a particular candidate. Writing about issues, I think, just be careful, um, because even more than, uh, even more than just kind of generally, you, you are maybe perceived as, you know, speaking what the town's position is. Um, and if it's, if it's something where you're looking for public input, you can write about, you know, "We're having a hearing coming up on X, Y, and Z, these are the kinds of issues that we're going to discuss, you know, I want to hear from people," or, you know, if a decision has already been made, um, you know, you can write and say, you know, "I've heard people are unhappy about, you know, the council's decision to switch to driving on the left-hand side of the street, you know, here, here are the reasons why we, you know, voted in favor of that." Um, you know, those are all kind of factual things, and they either are trying to, you know, solicit involvement in something that's coming up, or to explain something that's already been done. You know, I think those are fine. Um, you know, ongoing controversial issues, you, you can state your positions here, you can write it in letters to the editor, but I, I think just, you know, try to do it in, you know, as constructive a way as possible. Um, you know, bearing in mind that, um, you know, people may say that you're trying to influence X, Y, or Z. I mean, you know, you, you are influenced by the public, but you are also influencing the public. I mean, that's, that's kind of the role here, so it's, you know, it's kind of a fine line, but I don't think, you know, as a general rule, things, particularly ones that are within your own jurisdiction, are, are off limits for writing about.
So similar would apply, like, if you want to go on the radio talk show, you're going to be careful what you discuss. That's a live, see, when it's a live situation, um, I know, normally, I do not like to talk to the press, I do not, whatever, because you're caught off guard. In, in this here, this is, this is one thing, but all of a sudden they want to interview you out there or something, I stay away from it, because it's, I don't know, maybe I'm a little more prepared here, maybe I'm more confident here, but once it's out there, it's a whole different story, but-
Yeah, I mean, and, and you lose control over both the question and the answer there. You know, they, they can cut and paste, they can choose what portions of the sound clip get reported, um, you may misunderstand the question and give the wrong answer. Yeah, I mean, there, there, there are a lot of pitfalls.
Because that's the same thing, I tried to stay off, I was looking and going on the radio, and I said, "No, I don't, I think I'm going to stay away from that, because, you know, it's going to do more harm than good."
So in general, we're all town employees, right? Because we're paid by the town? So that, I would think that that, you know, you would go into real life, if I went on Facebook and I started putting all kinds of crazy stuff, and my, my company happened to see that, that could have a direct effect on my employment. Is that, is that how, because it sounds, it's, it's, there's got to be some kind of, yeah, it's, it's, so what you're saying right now is you're, if Ed goes on, or I go on the radio and I make a, you know, a fool of myself, it's really just self, self-inflicting wounds, right?
Yeah.
We're really not, but there's got to be some kind of liability for the town, so there's got to be, like you say, there, that, that town's, that township went against the, um, the rehab center, so they, they're working for the town, so that makes the town liable for whatever they say, right?
Yeah, I mean, they were, one was, I think two of them were elected officials, one was an appointed official. There, there's a whole set of First Amendment principles that apply to people who are, like, town employees, like, if Mary started, you know, posting crazy things on Facebook, um, oh, yeah. Yeah, I mean, they're, like, full-time employees, um, you know, some, a couple of the, a couple of the more prominent cases have involved, like, paid police and paid firefighters who, um, you know, go beyond speaking of interests of general public concern and start talking about specific situations that undermine the credibility of the whole department and of the town. You know, that, that's when, you know, you really need to start worrying about what it is that you're saying, how it's being perceived, and, you know, the, the consequences to the municipality. But I think, um, you know, just writing a letter about, you know, changes coming up at the transfer station, or, you know, why you picked certain things to add to or subtract from the budget, I think, you know, those are ones that are, that are kind of legislative decisions that are within your authority, um, you know, and you should be fine on those, those kinds of things. But if you start, you know, commenting about individuals in the fire department and their inability to, you know, save lives and things like that, um, you know, then I think there'd be problems.
Rich, I have a specific question. So what about school employees going on a public forum, bashing the Board of Ed, and insulting, and being very abusive? What about that? Where would the consequence be for them?
Fortunately, the Board of Ed has their own attorneys who can answer that question.
Can you pass that on?
Yeah, well, I think, you know, in that, in that kind of situation, I mean, it, it would be specifically what- be specifically what kinds of concerns are, are they raising and are they, you know, generalized policy concerns? Are they personnel concerns? And, you know, you, you also start running into things like, you know, protections from unionization and things like that that, you know, you people unfortunately don't have the benefit of up here, you know, as unionized town council members. But it, yeah, I, I think, I think it, it would be important in that context to know the kinds of things because I think employees are allowed to talk about, you know, general policy things, general concerns. But when it, when it becomes personalized, specific or reaches a level where it basically undermines the working of the school system, you know.
I was just going to go there. When it gets to, when it gets to a personal attack in any, in any other company, any other reputable company, if you're, if, say, where my wife works, she's a nurse and there happened to be a person that complained about this and that and this and that, on Facebook, they found out, they fired her. I mean, that, that should be, I would imagine that's a Board of Ed policy, but, or maybe a superintendent policy, but that is, that's bad business, right? If you're, if I'm, if I'm coming out and I completely dislike you and what you're saying and, and bashing you, I would, I would think that if I was an employee, there would be some kind of repercussions. I know this, I know you, it's, it's a, it's a fine line of free speech, but there's also an employment line as well.
Right. Yeah, exactly.
Rich, I just got one question. Talking about personal attacks, when someone's up to the podium and is it at the discretion of whoever's running the meeting, where they draw the line is what is a personal attack on someone, whether it's based on opinion or speculation as opposed to if someone comes up and says, I don't like the way you voted on this. I mean, I totally understand. Everybody has the right to say that. But I've heard and not just during council meetings, but other meetings I've attended as well, even as a citizen, where people have come up during public comment period and made personal attacks and it's, I always wondered where should that line be drawn to where you say, okay, all right, stop. Because I have, there have been a couple of times I've, I've stopped someone during comment. And if someone's going, does that and then they don't stop and they continue, I'm assuming the chair or whoever's running the meeting can then just say, okay, you're not allowed to speak anymore.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's one of those things where there is no bright line rule, but I think where, where it goes from, you know, I don't like how you voted on the budget to, you know, and the reason you voted against it is because, you know, your sister got fired by the school and, you know, you're just trying to get back at them where, where you're, you know, where the, where the discussion is moving towards speculation about motivation, personalities, you know, kind of non-public things. I think that's where it's like, you know, point of order, you know, we're not going to have personal attacks. You can, you know, you can, you can object to the person's vote on policy reasons. You can object to something they said publicly during the conversation. But I think if, you know, once you start trying to, you know, impugn their motives or their credibility or their personality, you know, it's, it's no longer a public comment matter. Yeah, it's hard to know where that line is. You usually figure it out about 10 seconds after they've passed it.
Yep.
And, yeah, I mean, it's, it's like watching the train wreck, you know, and it's like, okay, well, now we're, now we're going to stop that.
Now, with the Roberts rules, the point of order, is that only allowed by the person, by the commission?
Yes, by the assembly.
Yes.
Right.
So, then would that apply to anybody that was out in the, with somebody out in the public comment area?
No, they could say that, but, but you wouldn't have to observe it up here.
So, the only one?
You know, they can't make motions to adjourn from the audience either.
So, then it would be like somebody on the council is, you know, on point of order, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
This is, we're, we're off topic and now it's a personal attack.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the, the town I live in, there was one member of the Board of Ed whose nickname was Point of Order. Because, you know, it would happen two or three times at every meeting. So, it's like, oh, hey, Point of Order's coming. And I don't live in this town.
I had another question. I just lost my train of thought on that one.
So, I'm still stuck on the Facebook thing. So, I have like a private page and it's, it's wild. I'm a kind of wild woman, like outside this thing. But tell me again, like what are the rules? Like I don't in general talk about town stuff, but I will, you know, bash the federal government quite a bit.
Well, we don't have authority.
You don't have authority over the federal government, so you can say what you want. So, on my private page?
I'm not going to tell you to stop.
Is that the only thing I'm worried about? Is, is people we have authority about on my private, my private page?
I would, I would be concerned about getting into discussions about things that are pending before the council. But otherwise, you know, it's like, this.
We're responsible for our own actions.
Yeah, pretty much. I mean, and, you know, the people, people do what people are going to do. I think where, where you can get into trouble, and it, and it comes up more on, you know, like planning and zoning kind of things where, you know, people start commenting about pending applications or proposals or something like that. And, you know, members of the commission start liking and, you know, that sort of thing because it, it creates the appearance of prejudice or predisposition, you know, which frankly is less of an issue here because you're a legislative body and you're allowed to have opinions when you walk in the room. You know, so I think particularly if it's, you know, not town specific, not town council specific things, I'm not too concerned about that.
Well, I think this whole conversation really comes down to a couple of things. It really comes down to you, you are allowed to say and write and think whatever you want, but you're also not free from the consequences of your own actions. And the, the other part comes down to just because somebody's offended doesn't mean that they're right. And just because we're offended doesn't mean that we're right either. So, I mean, that's, I feel like this is, if I were to sum up this whole conversation, that's, that's where, where I've come to. And obviously, again, I can say what I want, but that doesn't mean that there's no consequences to what I've said.
Yeah, I mean, and I guess, you know, other than the, the two things about, you know, boards and commissions that you appoint and, you know, civil rights situations where you cross the line, you know, I think the, the key takeaways are just bear in mind that even if, even if you think you're speaking as a private citizen, there is a perception that you are speaking for the town and that, you know, like it or not, you're held to a higher standard. You know, you can have opinions. It is a political environment. Just sort of be aware of, you know, the resonation of, of what things you say and do. And, you know, again, it, it's fine to disagree, but you don't have to be disagreeable while you're doing it.
Let's say you have one person that keeps coming forward and making personal attacks and you have to shut them down, meeting after meeting after meeting. Is there a point where you can prevent that person from getting up and speaking at all? Or do you have to wait till they cross the line and then cut them off?
I would, I would say unfortunately the latter because if you cut them off, if you ban them, you've taken the bait. That, that's the kind of response that they want. And then, you know, they will escalate it to, you know, gag order from comrade, you know, Anderson, you know, at the town council meeting.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
To follow up on Jason's comment though. So, if they're belligerent each meeting, you can shut them down each meeting if you have to.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you, you know, like children, you know.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Rich, I appreciate very much you coming, coming tonight and going over all this with us.
No, my pleasure. It's good to see you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll stay here.
Okay, we'll move on to the agenda back to item 10, appointments to boards and commissions. 10A, Richard, Richard Miller is seeking appointment to the Ag Commission. There are currently three regular member and two alternate member, alternate vacancies available. The regular term runs for three years. The available terms would run as follows. The first one would be November 1st, 2021 through October 31st, 2024. The second would be November 1st, 2020, second and third would both be November 1st, 2020 through October 31st of 2023. Mr. Miller is seeking to be appointed as a regular member. Can I get a motion to appoint Mr. Miller?
So moved.
There we go.
Motion was made by Mr. Wood, seconded by Mr. Grandowski. And just for clarification purposes, right, right up front, is there a certain term you were looking to appoint him to?
That's a great question.
May I make a recommendation?
Please.
That you appoint him for the first term, which is a full three years?
That was the one I was looking at. So, I'll make that, that recommendation.
So, the term would be a regular member for a term from November 1st, 2021 through October 31st, 2024. I will open up for discussion.
That was going to be my comment. Which ones do we pick? So, that, right. Well, Julia, generally it is that we should get the longest term in general. I mean, for instance, it might say, but we're going to appoint him for maybe to clarify it so we don't have to do what you just did. I don't know.
I leave it case by case.
Yeah, we always list the, all of the terms that are open so that way, you know, you may have somebody that comes before you that you may feel would be better suited for, you know, an initial shorter term to get, you know, better acquainted with the commission before you appoint for a full, you know, a full available term. So, it kind of gives you the option of deciding which, which one. So, we give you all open available ones. But, you know, again, this one, and I will say the next one, I would recommend that you do for the, you know, the full term, but.
Mr. Wood.
I just wanted to say about Mr. Miller there. I appreciated him. He, when he came before us last week, he kind of did some of his homework, but he also realized that he has far more to learn. And I got to say, we, we still all have much to learn. That's part of why we just had Mr. Roberts here. So, you know, I, I definitely appreciated his eagerness to learn more and be willing to serve.
I agree. I always am encouraged when members of the community come forward and are looking to serve for boards and commissions. Without the volunteers that we have, it would be very difficult, if not impossible, to conduct some of the business the town has to do.
I was going to say too, the Ag Commission is so important, especially the way the world is today. Being self-sufficient and doing a lot of things on your own, I think it's, it's great for how they work with the Killingly Community Garden. And now with the rec center moving over there, it, you know, you'll have a lot of kids involved. It helps with the seniors. I think this is a very important commission and I think it's really sad that we have such a need on this commission. And I think the younger people getting involved is really key to getting, you know, more people out there to come forward and join because, you know, three regular members and two alternates. I mean, we really need a lot of people to step up and this is very valuable for the whole community.
How are they on, on quorum? You know, are they right minimum quorum members or?
They are not currently able to meet quorum, so they do not have a, they don't, they're not able to hold meetings right now.
Okay.
I believe with the addition of this individual, they will be able to make a quorum, a minimum quorum for a meeting, but right now they don't currently have enough members.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries unanimously. Next item up on the agenda is item 10B. Mr. Aubrey is seeking appointment to the Water Pollution Control Authority. There are currently three regular members and two alternate vacancies available. The regular term runs for three years. The available terms would run as follows. The first one would be from November 1st, 2019 through October 31st, 2022. The second one would be November 1st, 2021 through October 31st of 2024. I will entertain a motion to appoint Mr. Aubrey to the term running from November 1st, 2021 through October 31st of 2024.
I'll make that motion.
Motion has made, been made by Mr. Grandowski, seconded by Ms. Barclay. Discussion. I think Mr. Kertulow is first.
If we had pointed him to the term that ran from November 1st, 2019 to October of 2022, he wouldn't need to return for an interview when that expired if he wanted to remain on.
You would have to still reappoint again.
Reappoint, but he wouldn't have to come in.
Correct, but he would still have to go back through a reappointment period.
Gotcha.
And I believe Mr. Wood was second.
Yeah, I just, again, this one, I guess I enjoyed last week our interviews. Mr. Aubrey was, that's probably one of the most fun interviews I've ever had, I've ever sat through. He, he was very personable, but he also brought a depth and knowledge of WPCA that was just amazing. So, I mean, he's definitely, in my, my opinion, my personal opinion, I know we just got through talking about this, but my personal opinion, he is, he is more than qualified to serve. Not that we ever have true qualifications, but just that depth of knowledge is just amazing. So.
I absolutely agree. Mr. Grandowski.
Yeah, and again, the same thing. WPCA is three members, minimum quorum, so no one shows up. Going through the, everything we're going through now, going to town run versus, you know, SUEZ or, I can't remember the new name.
Yeah.
Well, so they're done June 30th. So, I mean, it'd be nice we get additional people because the transition is going to be, hopefully it's good. I think it will be, you know, from what I'm seeing, what Mary's saying, you know, I think we're, we're good. But we could use a few more members helping things out. And I think he's a great candidate.
Thank you. I agree.
One more quick addition.
I have a question, just the commissions in general. Do you want me to wait till we're done with this part?
Yeah.
As far as getting more people? Okay, finish up.
With Mr. Aubrey, I sat on the Charter Revision Committee with him and his comments during his interview saying how he was a peacemaker to take from both sides and get to come to one resolution was very accurate. So, he's, I think he'll do well over there. So.
Thank you.
And your comment?
I was going to ask Mary, when, can we advertise, like saying the Turnpike, Turnpike Buyer, Shoppers Guide, whichever one, I can't remember, Turnpike Buyer, for commissions? Can we like maybe do a monthly thing or is that outside our budget?
No, we usually do it. We usually try and do it quarterly.
Oh, okay.
I will say I haven't done it in the last quarter. So, we're, I have Jan working on the list of vacancies again because they've just been changing kind of so rapidly. So, we're looking, I'm trying to get one ready to go in for July for the Shoppers and Turnpike Buyer. We usually try and do it a couple of times a year to just, you know, put out what, what's available, you know, what's open and vacancies.
What about the Killingly Villager? Do we ever use them? Because I know a lot of people.
We periodically use them.
Okay.
Yeah. I will say for, for this type of vacancy opening, for whatever reason, we've gotten more responses out of Shoppers Guide and Turnpike Buyer. It's like employment, our employment advert-
It's like employment, our employment advertisements, we typically get more responses out of the Shoppers Guide and the Turnpike Buyer than we have out of any of the other traditional papers, whether it's the Villager or the Turnpike Buyer, I mean, or the Norwich Bulletin. But, you know, I don't know if it's just because we're all used to flipping through that Turnpike Buyer or Shoppers Guide, when it gets to our mailbox every Wednesday, and we, you know, that's where we find all that information, but we try and get it into, you know, and I, a couple of times a year, I try and see if I can get one of the media sources to do, you know, an article on openings and stuff like that, so. Yeah.
Now, can you put something out, like, once a month on the town Facebook page? Just put a post, "We are looking to fill these vacancies," and renew it each month with whether vacancies are filled or have become vacant?
Sure, yeah, we can, you know, I try and get information out like that. Not, you know, always necessarily successful in getting it out every single month, but I'll do my best to try and make sure we get a more regular posting.
And another thought would be, if you're on Winnie on a talk show, if you can just plug that.
I always usually plug it on Winnie. I always usually try and plug Board and Commissions on Winnie, because, you know, it is a larger audience, but, and to that point, our surrounding towns struggle with this as well. So it's, you know, in that audience, it, you know, might perk other, might be a benefit to other towns as well, but, yeah.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on to the agenda. Next item up on the agenda is item 11, reports from liaisons. Board of Ed liaison.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Kyle Naparata, Board of Education member. So, quick rundown of our last meeting. We had a visit from the Killingly Intermediate School Choir and Band. Several members won some pretty prestigious awards. They're really doing a great job over there with the band and the choir. We also, the meeting before, we had the robotics team come in for recognition because, as I'm sure you're all aware, they were world champions, so it was a pretty big deal. The, then for regular business, we had a policy, a few readings of policy changes, mainly for course, curriculum, instruction-based things, but one big bylaw that we were, had a first reading on was changing public comment to a 30-minute per meeting versus 20 minutes per topic. And then we're doing a three-minute per person instead of a five-minute per person. It just, we're trying to get more people access to speak, but then limited to a 30-minute time period. We can always extend it if need be, but we're just trying to streamline things because we've had more meetings than not run to the 11 o'clock hour in the last year, I would say. So that was there. We did review and approve the 2022-23 budget, and we were presented by the superintendent with some significant savings for health and dental, which took a big chunk of the ask that they had, we had for the budget. And then we had said that we would go into the non-lapsing if necessary. We don't know yet if we're gonna need to do that, so at this point, everything is covered. We also received a farm viability grant, which is pretty cool. So it's gonna do local agriculture, local vegetables, produce that are gonna be bought locally by the food service, brought back to the school, and then they're gonna prepare it right there as opposed to buying mass-produced things. So, yeah, this was a full-on grant, it was $18,000, I believe it was. So it's, we're gonna be, he's gonna be shopping, the food service manager, at like four different farms, Canterbury, a couple in Killingly, and I think the other one might have been out a little bit further towards Chaplain or something, but, so that's gonna be kind of neat. A big thing that we just started talking about is, I'm sure all schools are talking about, is school safety, and so we're kicking around some ideas, school safety, how we can improve, beef it up, whether it's officers, you know, cameras, locks, we're just exploring all avenues at this point. But that's, that was last week's meeting, so. Any questions?
Thank you. Mr. Wood.
I know Mr. Farren gave the report last, he drew the straw last month. But one thing that was brought up was that they've been unable to, you guys have been unable to meet with the high school regarding issues that have been going on. Have you been able to meet with them since?
We have not rescheduled that at this point. We're still trying to work on the legal aspect of the complaint that's at the Board of Education, the State Board of Ed. So we're kind of tied up with that at the moment. Hopefully, that's gonna, decision's gonna come down soon so we can move forward. But that's where we're at at this point. Yes, sir?
I was listening to the Connecticut station, Legislative Station, whatnot, and there was a forum about food waste. Did we participate in any digester company that has a digester system with our food waste? I don't know, you know, they were talking about larger users to try to keep our waste stream down.
That's a good question. I could present that to the superintendent and the manager for witnesses.
But they kept emphasizing it's the local towns, the local towns, but there's no money at the local towns to even get it going. That's why, just, any grants or anything coming out with that, or any proposals?
That's a new one, so.
Participation in that scenario?
Be happy to ask about that and get you some info.
I got a question. Speaking of school security, our policy as it is now, there's no access, there has to, I'm just curious, is there access, is there some vulnerable locations in our schools? Open doors that shouldn't be open doors? I mean, do we, did we address that? Did the superintendent address that situation in all of our schools?
Just real quick, one thing I would like to suggest is if there are any weak points, don't identify them.
At this point, we're looking.
Have we reviewed it? Is there, you know?
We are reviewing, and I believe that Officer McCusker has done a review of the schools, and he's talked to the superintendent, and he's gonna be giving us a report, but I believe at this point, it's single access during the day. I actually went to the high school for an award ceremony with Kelly Martin a week or week and a half ago for the, one of the programs for the seniors, the career pathway ceremony, and I couldn't park in the front. I parked around back. I walked up to the doors, and I was like, oh, school safety, there's not even any handles on here. I don't even have an option of pulling the door open.
That's good.
So I was like, no, I'm not annoyed, this is a good thing. This is good. So I had to text Kelly, and she had to come over and let me in, but there was no other way to get in if you didn't come through the front door, so.
Right.
But I know that they are stringently reviewing things. The Killingly Memorial School, the construction process, I know that's part of the construction process is, again, beefing up security. I know we've talked about more cameras. We actually allocated some monies last year to fix up some cameras at KIS that had been out of commission for a short time, so I believe those have all been reinstated. But, yeah, I know this is certainly a big issue for us going forward over the next year, I would imagine.
One thing I just want to bring up, as far as the awards presentations, in past years, what the council has done is we invite the student, the FFA students, the student athletes, we invite them to a council meeting, and it usually ends up being not until July. And I know that does create a lot of difficulty for some students, whether they're away for the summer, they've already got plans, families plan vacations during the summer. If possible, I would like to be able to coordinate with the Board of Ed and schools to where next year, during the awards presentations, the council can present the plaques that we have during those presentations, to make it easier that way, the students who deserve the recognition can get the recognition from the council as well and receive the plaques, rather than having to drag them back out to another meeting, to a town council meeting here.
So you like to be alerted when it's on our agenda, that they're gonna be there?
Well, the...
So I think we tried this year to coordinate with the school, with the high school specifically around their year-end awards, banquets and stuff like that, and that process didn't quite pan out.
Okay.
And so it would be nice if we would be able to have, you know, as the, as the school and as the Board of Ed is doing their award ceremonies at the end of the school year, if the town council could just participate in that to give out their, you know, awards at like the sports banquet or, you know, whatever that might look like, if it's possible.
Sounds like a good idea.
So, just to further incorporate that as opposed to doing it separately, I think that's what you were looking at.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. I believe a couple more questions.
Well, I'm kind of going along with what Mary was just saying. I, you know, I think, as a former Killingly High alumni, I enjoy being able to give back to these students and recognize them. I don't, I think sometimes they, you get the perception that it's only the Board of Ed that cares about them, but I want them to understand that this town is incredibly proud of them. And as a counselor, I think, I mean, I hope that it works out better this next year, so. Even with the KISS students, I mean, I think, you know, particularly the sooner you can let them, let these children know that, you know, it's not just your teachers that care about you. It's, you know, you've got this whole town.
The whole community.
The whole community cares about you.
Absolutely.
I'm just gonna make another reminder for the VASTL subcommittees to get together to discuss the transparency of the budget.
Okay.
Because time's quickly going by before the next budget's gonna be presented.
The Permanent Building Committee had a joint session with the BOE in the beginning of their meeting last week that go over the Phase 1 of the KMS renovation. And then after that meeting, we went, the Permanent Building Committee went downstairs and was, got even deeper into it, but, yeah.
I don't have it on here, I don't know why. Oh, it was up, sorry, I missed that.
Okay, I just wanted to bring that up.
Yes.
Yeah, and so the KMS project is, was presented for the design development phase, and it is $217,000 under budget currently. And so they did receive bids for Phase 1, which is selective demolition and remediation phase, which will be starting this, you know, this month, really, this month. And the bids that were received at the beginning of June, I think we got them on June 1st or June 2nd, were very favorable. There was, we did have a heightened concern as to whether or not those numbers were gonna come in within our budget projections, and we, they actually, overall in totality, came in under budget. So that was really positive for the overall project, but I did, while I wasn't here for that meeting, I did watch it on.
Right.
I did watch it live to see how that presentation went, and so I think it was a pretty good presentation.
Initially, it is still positive, and there are, like you said, 217,000 under budget at this point, so.
Right.
Yeah, things are still looking great for that project.
What is the actual start date? Has that been established?
I would, Mary Brom left already.
I believe, not to cut in, but I believe the week of the 20th was when they were gonna start moving.
They're doing the moving yet. I think it's the week of the 27th, they're starting the actual move.
Yeah, I think the...
So the move of the fourth grade items over to Westfield Avenue, the movers are coming in the week of the 27th. The actual physical start, I think, for construction might be, or demolition, might be about the same timeframe. So they're trying to get into the school pretty much as soon as the school vacates.
I think as soon as they get kids out.
Yep.
As soon as they've got kids out, I think they're trying to get in, so, and we'll be working overall with superintendent, the Permanent Building Commission, the different agencies on planning for groundbreaking ceremony, but that won't likely be until like the end of September, October, when we really start kind of digging into the larger scope of the project.
And on that, they did bring one thing, was the memorial that they were talking about building, which people had asked, and I'm hoping they're going to, you know, get some town participation, some input. It looks like it'll be a really, really cool thing, you know, a memorial wall, and then those pillars that they were talking about, it was a pretty neat thing that they were gonna be doing, so.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you very much, Mr. Naparata.
Thank you all. Sorry about the hat, I was late for work.
That's okay.
Nothing wrong with that hat.
All right, we'll move on to the agenda. Item 11B, Borough Council Liaison.
For me last month, so our mil rate is again 5.05, and it's the third year that we've done that, and we were able to add some sidewalk repairs and some other items, thanks to the water rate going down, so that's gonna be very helpful. We're holding a public hearing tomorrow night at 6:30 before our regular meeting about the ARPA funds and taking public comment on that, and we're also gonna be working with the town and using their guidelines for the approval of applications. And I don't know if they've met yet, but I know there was a discussion about, meeting with the town about some sidewalk repairs on Franklin Street, Furnace Street, and maybe on Reynolds also after the paving was done. And the paving looks really good on East Franklin. Now, if we can keep them from speeding, it'd be wonderful. And also, the fire department's looking to replace their bay doors, and for two of them, because they're arched, the wood is rotted, and to get trucks in, we've got to kind of square that off, but because we are in a historic district, we're gonna have to go before the Historic District Commission about the replacements. But from what I have seen on the National Register, well, actually, the parks oversees the National Register, that when it comes to public safety, there's a little bit more leeway for that to be done, and I'm not sure if we'll have to go before the state, too, because Academy Street is different. There, the town has all of Academy Street in their district. The state and the feds split it in half, so you had your main street historic district, well, it goes up to the firehouse. So sometimes we have to go before both commissions. And then the rest of Academy Street, there is a Broad Street-Davis Park district. So it's lovely to deal with, and explain to people why there's, you know, different ones. Is there any questions?
I heard you roll it onto the weather, so it's good to see you back here in person.
Thank you.
We missed you.
Agreed. Any other comments? Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the agenda. Next item up is 12A, discussion and acceptance of monthly budget reports. Can I get a motion to adopt 12A summary report on general fund appropriations for town government?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made by Mr. Wood, seconded by Mr. Cottula. Seeing none? All is in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We'll now move on to item 12B, discussion and acceptance of monthly budget reports. Can I get a motion to adopt system object based on adjusted budget for the Board of Education?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion has been made by Ms. George, seconded by Mr. Wood. Discussion. Motion has been made by Ms. George, seconded by Mr. Wood. Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We'll now move on to item 13A, Correspondence Communication Reports, the Town Manager Report. Ms. Gloria, if you could.
So I, again, continued to give you the information with regards to COVID and vaccination status. Next I gave you an update on the Buck Street sewer. This is regards to the WPCA. So back in 2020, we did, the WPCA did a sewer line installation on Prospect Street to alleviate the use of, you know, cross, what we call cross-country sanitary sewer lines that were behind people's houses and not able to, we weren't able to maintain them or, or really access them. They had degraded substantially. And so we, we installed that new line on Prospect. And we connected 16 residential properties to that new main line. There's been some, there's been a fair amount of degradation on some of the Buck Street section of what's cross-country lines as well on, on Buck Street. So we're going to be replacing a section of sewer line on Buck Street. That, that project is actually underway as we speak right now. They've begun that. It will connect 10 residential properties on Buck Street to a new sewer main that's actually physically located in the roadway as opposed to across multiple property lines. And that's going to be a cost of $174,000. That's expected to be completed over the course of about 60 days, probably less than that. It'll all depend on weather. But we, and we've been able to assist. Many of these properties are lower income properties. And so we've been able to assist those in utilizing some of the housing rehab. The WPCA created a housing rehab fund as well to assist property owners in being able to connect to the new sewer main. Because when you have, a lot of their sewer connections were to the rear of their house and you have to re-point the sewer connection to come out the front in order to connect to the new sewer main that's in, in the roadway in the front of the house. So there's internal plumbing that has to, to take place. And so given that, you know, it's income dependent and qualifying, but we've been able to assist some within that housing rehab program in order to be able to make those connections and make it affordable. So they, the WPCA will continue to work on identifying their next priority areas for repair. And those are, those areas are like River, River Ridge, North River Lane, Griffiths and Leander Streets. Those are likely candidates, but those are not hard and fast. It will depend on, you know, as they have funds available to do sewer line repairs or replacements and conditions of those. And if there's others that may crop up as more, more urgent in need. The transfer station operations, we really covered that through Ms. LaBerge's comment in public comment. And it's really just to let people understand that, you know, if somebody, they are taking pictures of loads at the transfer station and that is to make sure that the town itself is compliant and can meet those requirements. And it's, it's random. They're not, you know, it's not every load and they're trying to caper, caper about 2% of the load. So you may go one time and, you know, it's, it feels just like normal and there may be another time that somebody comes and takes a picture. And it's not, you know, it's not geared at or targeted at anyone or any particular type of load. It's, it's, they're trying to get a random sampling.
There was a comment on the radio, a talk show about this. I don't know if it was, I think it was yesterday, just briefly that I got it. And they were not happy. What's going on? Our rights are being violated.
Oh, might've been after my, because I was on the radio station, I was on the radio station for the first half hour, for the first hour yesterday.
Whatever it was, I don't know. And then someone was there and they've got their picture taken and they weren't too happy. But I think we need this out there that compliance is necessary.
Right.
The waste is just going crazy.
And this is how the state is requiring documentation of compliance. So they are also at the disposal facility. They have an inspector that is randomly, you know, selecting 2% of all loads in order to be able to essentially document. And they, you know, photograph the load and photograph the, the disposal op, you know, the operation that's coming to dispose. So it's the same criteria that they're utilizing for operations. And that, you know, it's not a new statute. The statute has been on the books for a long time. It's just that it hasn't necessarily been enforced by the state for a very long time. And now that there's so, such constraints on the disposal of solid waste now, that's why we're seeing such heightened awareness of, of this. So, and that's why we're really looking to develop that educational campaign. And that kind of segues into the next one with regards to the amount of money that we received on our first payment from the NIPS. The statute, the new legislation put in place around the deposit on NIP bottles. The town received 17,000 for our first payment. Under that legislation, we'll receive payments every six months. And it'll be dependent on how much, how many of those are sold within the boundaries of Killingley. So base, it's based on the origination of sale in the town. And the use of the, the use of that funds is restricted. And so I outlined what those restrictions are and it's really to reduce the generation of solid waste and, and how we may educate those in, in coming up with other ways of, of disposing of solid waste. It does give options of being able to purchase equipment. We have adequate street sweepers. We don't need to purchase any additional street sweepers. But it may mean that we look at adding additional trash barrels for appropriate disposal of that as opposed to having it land in the streets or, you know, in our, in our stormwater systems and stuff like that. So we'll be bringing forward to the Solid Waste Subcommittee options for recommendations to the town council ultimately on the utilization of those funds. But, you know, given that we've only received 17,000 at this point, it's not like I'm looking to really put together an entire large-scale proposal for expenditure, because we don't know, you know, how much, we don't have much historical knowledge as to how much we're going to be receiving on a, on a regular basis. So I would like to see some regular trends on that before we develop really an operational or ongoing expenditure plan for that before we do that. So we'll be bringing something to Solid Waste Subcommittee for consideration that would eventually come to the town council. And then I, I listed the meetings that I attended. Last week I was out for most of last week on a, on a medical leave. I appreciate everyone's patience while I got through that. Right now I'm still going through recovery. So I, I know I sound stuffy. It's, I'm not sick. It's just recovery. So I appreciate everyone's patience as I got through that.
On the NIPS thing, because I don't know anything about it, is the money based on less NIPS or more NIPS?
No. So it's based on the sale of NIPS. So they put a deposit. So the state implemented a five, five cent deposit on NIP bottles. However, none of the, you know, normally we would bring, people would bring those bottles and return them in a bottle return. You can't do that with NIPS because the bottles are too small and they jam the machines. So none of the machines can accept those. So what they've done is instead of having it be refundable to the customer, they have the manufacturers have to remit the five cents to the towns for the towns to then manage the solid waste disposal of the NIP bottles that are occurring all over the place. So this was to try and reduce the amount of, because NIP bottles is a huge problem on sides of roads. And it then gets into our stormwater systems and it gets into our rivers and it gets in, you know, and, and it, it, it's a blight. It's a, it's a, it's a chronic problem. But without having the actual mechanisms for people to cash in on that five cents, they, there's no bottle return mechanism for people to be able to cash in on that five cents. So the customer pays the five cent deposit that is then remitted, remitted to the manufacturer. The manufacturer has to then remit that five cents to the town in which the bottle was purchased.
Yeah, but where does, how does it prove that the bottle gets back?
It doesn't. The bottle never gets back.
Oh, the bottle never gets back.
The bottle never gets back. We are stuck with the problem of trying to then clean it up. So the, the, the 5% is now, that's why they put restrictions on what we can use the five, the, the money on. We can use it to mitigate the problem. So we get to clean it up.
You pay the five cents and they continue to-
Now-
Right.
So a NIP bottle is, my understanding is, most of the ones I've seen, NIP bottles, not that I've seen them. Uh, NIP bottles are recyclable, however, it's just the fact that you can't have a machine that accepts them. Now, could the town put something in place where if you bring NIP bottles back, you get five cents a NIP bottle and we make sure that they go to a recycling facility? I know that would be difficult, but it would help.
We can explore the, the options around that and explore what, you know, what that would operationally potentially look like. One of the biggest challenges with NIPS is that, based on market analysis, NIPS are typically disposed of within 100 feet of the place that they're purchased.
I take, I take-
Or on Lake Road.
My front yard is loaded.
And it may be a little bit further if they get, if they get in the, in the car.
That's true.
I wouldn't mind if I could just pick them all up, but use it while the lawnmower gets them or whatever. And then they're, well, and it's, it's not quite in the road so they get into the catch base.
They do. They do.
In front of mine, it's not. There's not enough of a flow.
Yes.
They stay in front, so I gotta pick them up.
But there is, there is a higher percentage that is tossed within a short distance of where they're actually purchased from. And so, you know, we, 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 even though we have deposits on cans and bottles, I mean, think about our typical cans and bottles. How many people return cans and bottles? And we have individuals that, that's what they do is go along the sides of the roads and pick up cans and bottles because they're pitched out the windows all the time as well. And not returned, even though there's a five cent deposit on them either. So, you know, I think part of, you know, and I think that the, the state is looking at trying to incentivize the companies to create a mechanism for the return. Because ultimately that has the better, the higher capacity or the higher possibility of actually taking them off of the road and actually getting them into a true recyclable state. But that, that needs to be developed, that. So, so we can look at the possibilities and, you know, cognizantly be understanding of what the actual, you know, boots-to-the-ground operational component is of this. But it will take time to develop what, what a potential program might look like. And in the meantime, we may decide to look at putting, installing some additional trash barrels in strategic locations that may help to address, because sometimes if there is at least a trash barrel, they might make it in there as opposed to just on the ground. So that is a challenge with the, with the new statute, is that essentially it does nothing to get them off the road. It does nothing to get them off the ground. It puts the onus on the towns. We can hire somebody to go out there.
I feel like just put in a couple piston pumps and you'll get them all.
Yeah. So that's, that's my report.
At one of our waste meetings, we got a, a reprimand for a Plainfield hauler that picked up material from someone in Killingley, dropped it off at the Plainfield Transfer Station. And we got a slap on the wrist because it came from Killingley.
So we got a notice of violation. And that is part of the statute that requires, and that's where the facility, the, you know, the, the, where they, the disposal facility has to, there's an inspector that is inspecting the loads that are coming into the, into that facility. If a load is determined to be more than two, so if a, if a MSW load is determined to have more than 2% recyclables within it, or vice versa, a recycling load is, is determined to have more than 2% of MS, of, of solid waste in it, then the load is considered in violation. And the hauler is given notice that it's in violation and they determine where the haul came from. So every hauler has general routes that they've just picked up from and they determine where those, where that, that load came from. The municipality then gets a notice of violation. That being said, we've reviewed this with our town, with our attorney. The town doesn't contract with the hauler or with the facility or with whoever generated the trash, except for if it came from our transfer station. So if it came from our transfer station, then we do have a potential liability for, for, you know, for fines. But in that situation, we essentially, we don't have exposure on that. But we do get a notice of violation, even though we have absolutely no control over any of that. That what they do, what the state recommends in our conversation with the state was, this town should try and do some educational campaigns to, you know, remind people that you don't put trash in recycling, you don't put recycling in trash. And that's where some of this educational campaign is, that we're going to be trying to develop to get people to understand what's recycling and what's trash.
Well, getting back to when we, we're trying to do our townwide collection, I caught a lot of grief that the town would pursue something like that. There was a number of individuals that, I have a dumpster and I don't recycle and I throw everything in the dumpster and you guys were foolish in going with this townwide and I want my hauler and this and that. And now this is bringing it forward that a hauler from outside of town comes to town here, picks up something that they're not, and we're still, we're still at fault. That's, I, I can't, I have an issue with that, that, look, we, we got the violation that, because it was generated generated from the Killingley enterprise.
Well, my understanding, we, did we get a violation or just notice that a violation-
We got a, we got a notice of violation from, we got a notice of violation from the disposal facility. Not from the state, from the disposal facility that we have no contractual relationship with. It's, it's because of the language of the statute, right? I mean, that's the, that's, that's the requirement under the statute, is that the town, that the municipality is noticed of the viol, is, is, is served with the notice of violation, right? Again, you know, we've been through this. We don't really have, you know, we can, you know, ask the hauler, you know, what, you know, where do you think you picked it up from? And try and send educational information, but more appropriately, we'd be, we'd be to do a townwide educational campaign on what needs to be recycled. One of the challenges that we run into is when you have like, you know, a multifamily complex that does have a dumpster and all they have is a dumpster. They're going to throw everything in there. They don't have a separate recycling bin, right? And how does that get managed? And that's really from the haulers, that's the haulers and their contract, right? They need, the hauler needs to figure out a way to make recycling accessible to those that are only dumpster contracts. The town can't, can't force that or require that we don't have the contractual relationship. So that's kind of also changing that mindset of, you know, how some of that is, is functioning.
Can we send them a notification of violation from the town to, to kind of negate our, basically pass the responsibility on to, on to, on to the contractor?
The contractor also receives a notice of violation. So they've already received a notice of violation. And we don't really have the authority to send them a notice of violation. We don't-
Is that just a courtesy, what they're doing to us, kind of in a way?
It's not really, it's really just to satisfy the statute.
Yeah.
It's all it is. It's all it is. It's to satisfy the letter of the statute.
There's no T.
That's what it is.
It's not Mary. There's nothing enforceable. They can't fine us. They can't, nothing like that.
In those, in that, the only time that the town could get.
Because we don't contract with them.
That the enforcement can get to the town and we could be in true violation is with our transfer station. And that's why we need to make sure that our transfer station operator is checking loads and is, you know, being cognizant of what's being put in the different locations. But that's really our exposure is our transfer station. Um, the rest of it, we really don't have an exposure there, but we will receive those notices because that's what the letter of the law, that's what the statute actually states, is that we have to receive it.
Now, as far as town buildings and schools, who handles the waste from them? Does that go to the transfer station or is that, we have a hauler?
We all have our own, we have our own hauling contract, so we use Casella and we do have recycling bins and we do have our regular, uh, solid waste. So yes, we, and our custodian manages those as well as I'm sure with the school. But, um, that's, we are individually contracted. Um, it does, does not go to our transfer station.
So might it be worthwhile or recommend to the Board of Ed that they may do some education as well? To make sure that.
Well, we would incorporate that all within an educational campaign. I mean, it just makes sense to do it all together.
Yeah, especially when we got DEP taking pictures at the transfer station. Then I, I figured with that.
So it's not DEP. DEP is not taking pictures of the transfer station. Casella, our operator, is taking pictures as documentation should there be a concern from the disposal facility that they can prove.
Okay, 'cause the individuals who are contacting me said DEP, but they were confused.
It's not really DEP.
Okay, I, okay, I'm, I'm.
It's our operator.
Okay, that's.
Our operator is taking pictures based on their new, on, on the newly implemented policy. So it's Casella that's doing it.
Okay, no, that's, that's good to know.
Trust me, there's not enough DEP employees to be out there doing that.
There was no way that.
They've got like one on this side of the state.
I was not gonna contract, uh, contradict that individual. So this is a good discussion that it was, you know, I like this. This, this is very helpful.
Yeah.
Very helpful.
Any other comments, questions?
I have a question, sir. Uh, Channel 22, I heard it wasn't working, uh, a week ago or so.
Yeah, your special town council meeting, it wasn't working. There was an issue with, um, uh, the, one of the systems had gotten changed in the booth. And so, and they were unaware of that, um, while you went live. And in order for that to be corrected, they would have had to completely take everything off, offline and have you, it wasn't, um, fully identified until you guys were well through, you had a pretty short meeting last month, last week. So, um, it was identified, it was corrected. Um, we don't foresee that issue occurring again. Um, but yes, they did have an issue with, uh, Channel 22, just for your special town council meeting.
Okay.
So, and I apologize for that.
That's fine. I didn't know, as long as it was rectified.
It was.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to the agenda. Next item up is 14A, unfinished business for town council action. Consideration and action on a resolution to authorize a town manager to expend funds under the American Rescue Act funding. Can I get a motion to adopt this?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Cattula, seconded by Mr. Wood. Um, I will open up for discussion. Ms. Gloria, if you could just go over this, please.
Sure. So, um, these items were, so the town has received, um, is receiving a total of 3.9 million in American Rescue Act funding. Um, the initial proposals, we, um, did a formal, um, application process um, for the ARP funding. Um, we received, uh, more applications than we had funding. Um, the fiscal subcommittee of the town council reviewed those applications and based, and I recommended that the fiscal subcommittee move forward, move seven of those forward for recommendation to the town council, which the fiscal subcommittee at their March 29th meeting did recommend the following. These, um, first seven applications for, um, approval to the town council and scheduling that public hearing. Um, the council, you scheduled that public hearing back at your April meeting for tonight's meeting. Um, and the seven items, um, the first three are town capital projects. Um, the first one is the sewer main replacement on Reynolds Street. And that project not only replaces the sewer main, but also a box culvert, um, that crosses the street. Um, they're actually, they actually intersect, the sewer main intersects with that box culvert. So you can't really do one without touching the other. Um, the box culvert has some significant deterioration. Um, and we do need to, um, address issues with that. And the sewer main, um, is kind of the last piece in that section of replacement. The sewer main on Main Street has been relined and the sewer main on Broad Street has been replaced. Um, the remaining sewer main on Reynolds Street is the old hundred-plus-year-old, uh, clay pipe. So the minute we touch it, you're gonna chase that all the way down the street. Um, so it's time for that to also be replaced. And that really kind of completes that area, if you will, for sewer main replacement. Um, we are able to leverage, um, some and reduce some of the cost on this because Connecticut Water is looking to replace their sewer, their sewer, their water line in Reynolds Street as well at the same time. So they'll be able to assist in offsetting some of the final paving costs because they would normally have to incur some of that cost. Um, the second one is, um, an office building improvement relocation for our law enforcement division. Um, as we continue to, um, progress with the development of that program, the current office space is already at capacity, um, and we don't have the ability to expand that. So we've looked at several options around town for consideration for, and this would be office administration space, not, uh, police station, right? So not where public would go, but rather where our officers would be able to do their administrative work and, um, uh, process files. Um, and so this, alternatives that we've looked at, um, I believe that 800,000 would be sufficient. Um, and we potentially would have a, we potentially could have a savings in that in order to get them to a space that's relocated where the program would be able to grow to, you know, 15 or so officers, um, which would give town, the town, you know, a number of years. Um, as we develop that program over time into what direction and path the town is going in, whether we remain in a resident state trooper contract and, you know, and a, a constabulary or whether we move into a, um, a municipal police force in which we're building a full, um, public safety complex, which would include all of the administrative support staff as well as, um, the facilities necessary for that. Um, the third one for the capital improvements is, um, or town capital projects is on the economic development of Phase Two and environmental assessments, really a Phase One and a Phase Two environmental assessment of 125 Alexander Parkway. This is our last parcel within our industrial park. Um, we had previously had a, uh, potential buyer for that, but when I, Brown Fields was identified there, um, that sale, um, that buyer, um, exited from that sale. Um, and so it would be, um, beneficial for the town to have a better understanding of exactly what's out there because we are, um, ultimately the entity that is on the hook for the cleanup of that Browns Field. We don't have the ability to go back on a previous, um, uh, owner of that par, parcel. So to better understand, um, impact and what is the potential cleanup needed out there in order to be able to bring in a, um, a buyer. The remaining four are outside agency requests that were all evaluated by the fiscal subcommittee. And, um, one is the Quint�ach Valley Senior Center. They had to do, they had a, their HVAC went down. They did the repairs on this. This is a reimbursement request of the 4,700, um, for their facility. TVCCA, um, was requesting some facility improvements to better facilitate their Meals on Wheels program and improvements into that kitchen area. ARC is looking at doing an organizational study to better understand, um, uh, service delivery options. Um, and that was 7,500. And then Access Agency had submitted a request for, um, a capital project to do window replacements on their, at their facility on Broad Street. Um, they have aged, um, aged infrastructure with regards to the windows. So, um, the request was to, um, bring these forward. It's about 1.8 million dollars, just a little over 1.8 million dollars of the total ARP funds. Um, there are three additional applications that I had, um, requested that the council wait on considering. Um, one needs to be vetted out a little bit further and we'll be bringing that forward to you. Um, but it would also give, two of them actually need additional vetting out. Um, and then the last one is the community center, which the count, council had mentioned several times during the, um, consideration of the Westfield Avenue project of dedicating a two-and-a-half million dollars to, um, that project. Um, the recommendation is to wait until the very end so that you know exactly how much ARP funds you have remaining after you've done any other appropriation, to then appropriate what remaining funds, if that's what you so desire to do, um, at that point in time. So, um, that's the request before you. And my recommendation is for, um, um, approval and authorization to move forward on these. As far as the, um, um, office space for the police, any lease, if we were to look at a lease or if we were to look at purchasing property, all of that would still have to come back to the town council. So we can't just expend and, um, you know, you guys would have additional steps and additional input into that process. Um, but this would allow us to really begin to make serious, um, inquiries and serious deliberation around spaces. Um, without, without that authorization, we really, you know, yeah, you really can't, um, have any serious, um, conversation without knowing if we have any actual appropriated funds for consideration.
Mr. Brandelke?
What happens if we don't expend? I mean, it says we gotta expend, fully expended by December 31st, 2026. Can we move monies around or how does that?
Yeah, so that was another reason why I recommended that we only move forward with these at this moment because, um, some of these may not come in at the numbers. Like, for instance, the law enforcement one, if we don't need to expend 800,000 dollars and the project comes in, depending on the location, substantially less than that, you could then reallocate those funds to another one of the projects, um, that you already have applications for. So it gives, you know, this, this, um, this grouping really gives, um, the first initial phases for us to start these projects and, um, get some projects completed with plenty of time. So if not all of the funds are expended, the council would then be able to reallocate them to other, you know, some of the other projects that you have right now just put on hold. Again, the funds do need to be expended by December 31st of 2026, but all projects that you have before you would be, you know, expended well before then.
Mr. Wood?
But we have to, if I remember right, so we have to expend by 2026. Uh, but we have to appropriate these by 2024?
By December 31st of 2024. That being, so that being said, um, you can have them appropriated, um, which I would anticipate that what you have in front of you, these, um, I would suspect that we would have them well underway, if not fully expended and projects completed um, by the end of 2023, beginning of 2024. Um, so you would have still time to, um, allocate them. Um, I believe, we're getting indications that, you know, if you have an item appropriate, if you have, if you have something appropriated under ARP and then it comes in under budget and you're in that two-year window, you would still be able to reappropriate the remaining funds, right? So they're not gonna all of a sudden, you know, claw back just because, um, you didn't, you know, you had appropriated, thought you were already spending, especially if they're on existing applications that, um, you had been considering already. You would have the flex, you would have some flexibility there. And technically, you've already appropriated all of the funds as, um, revenue loss. So you've technically appropriated all of the funds under that. Um, but you would want to get them fully expended by the 2026 timeline.
Now that you say that, my memory, my memory's great, just short.
It's okay. I, I'm right there with you.
So on the police station, that 800,000 dollars, is that, is that just, uh, is that gonna be used for studies to go into another building?
No.
I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna see beforehand that money get, being spent, right? We're gonna.
So this would be to identify a location for new office space and locate them into that office space. So this is not for a police station. This is not for studies for a police station.
I meant the 800,000 dollars, it's going to office space.
This would be.
So we're, so we're looking at leasing a space for them?
Leasing or purchasing a space. And we would bring, so clearly with any lease, we would have to bring a law, any long-term lease has to get approved by the town council in advance. So we would be bringing that to you. And if we are purchasing a property, that would have to come to the town council and also go before special town meeting because that's the acquisition of property. Um, so that would all have to take place prior to if we had to do any renovations to that space in order to make it suitable for law enforcement. Um, then we would, then we would have the additional cost of any of the renovation, which would be presented in that initial, you know, this is what we're looking at, this is what we're considering and these are the overall total costs. But this would be to relocate them into new space completely.
Right. So none of that money is like architectural rending?
No.
No? Okay.
No. I mean, we may decide that, um, we wanna look at, we will, you know, we, depending on the space that we're looking at, if we have to do substantial renovation, we may need to hire a firm to do, you know, designs or something like that. But ultimately, I think what we have, what we have looked at so far, I think we have the capaci, I think we have, um, I don't think we're gonna need that.
But that would come before the board, before that?
We would come.
Money is spent.
Correct. We would come to, because we have to secure the location first.
Right.
And that would have to come to you first.
Right. And I have one more. The, is this United Services for 150,000 dollars involved in that, that whole ARP?
No.
Okay.
That has nothing to do with ARP.
Okay, thank you.
Um, a couple things. Um, now, I thought we had, some of the discussions were moving the police and doing renovations on floor three here.
So we, no, so we've, um, the renovations for third and fourth floor here would not be enough space to accommodate law enforcement. The spaces up there, it's a very small, the third floor actually has the most space. The fourth floor is almost unusable space because of the pinning, um, uh, for the exterior walls that are, um, that are up on the fourth floor. So it's really only the third floor space. Um, and while it is larger space than what they have right now, it would not accommodate them for a longer, a long period of time. Um, you, we run out of space pretty quickly up there. Um, I would really be looking to potentially utilize the third floor for, um, our land use division or, um, some of our other town hall staff, um, divisions that are currently utilizing closet space.
Okay. Um, now, are these the only things that we can act on today or can we add other things?
So these are the only ones that you can act on today because this is the only ones that you've held a public hearing on. So there are other items that you've had, um, presentations on, like the 4H dam, the 4H, uh, the Wyndham 4H, and also the, um, United Services EPA program. Those you received presentations on, but those have not been noticed for public hearing. Um, and so you would need to notice them for public hearing before you take action on those. So these are the only items that were put forward for public hearing and noticed for public hearing.
Any other comments, questions? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on in the agenda. Next item up is 15A, or excuse me, 15A was already done. We're moving on to 15B, consideration and action on a resolution confirming the appointment of Matthew Lobush as the Parks and Rec Recreation Director. Can I get a motion to adopt this?
Make that motion?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Kurtula, seconded by Mr. Wood. Ms. Gloria, if you could.
If I may, yes. So the, clearly our previous recreation director, Parks and Rec Director left at the end of March. We began our search for a new director. We had nine submissions for that position. Our interview panel interviewed three of the nine candidates, the three top qualified individuals, and our interview panel then also subsequently brought back the top two candidates for secondary interviews. And we evaluated both, and I will say that Matthew was selected as the unanimous choice for moving forward our recreation, our Parks and Recreation Department as the new Parks and Recreation Director. He had a definite passion for Killingley and for in the recreation and the park system within Killingley. We, the, the program is at a pivotal point with the, with the moving of, moving over to Westfield Avenue and the possibilities that that may bring. And, you know, for our second, for the second interview, I had both candidates do some homework and come with some suggestions and ideas. And he had really good options, but he, in his interview process, I had two of our key, one from each side, the Parks and our Recreation Department, two key personnel participate in interview, in that interview panel. And I really watched to see how he would communicate with them and, because I, we want to see somebody who's a team player, who's really going to collaborate well with, with the staff. And he didn't just talk to our staff, he communicated and he conversed with them in a very, in a very good way. So I, I feel very confident that we have a really good team leader that will be joining our team. And so we highly recommend, recommend him for the position. He then subsequently came before the personal subcommittee last Monday on the sixth and was interviewed by the personal subcommittee. The personal subcommittee unanimously recommended him for approval here to the town council. So he, Bucky's here tonight, he goes by Bucky as well. So Bucky's here tonight. He has background, you know, he has many years in Parks and Recreation in Brooklyn, but he also was here in Killingley as a recreation supervisor and kind of started his career in recreation here in Killingley. So he's familiar with a lot of our programming that we previously did here, but he's, you know, been close enough to watch a lot of our programming, you know, in, in a neighboring town. He's collaborated with our group in the past and I think it, he brings a lot to the future growth of that, of those departments.
Thank you. Bucky, if you would like to come forward?
Sure.
I knew you looked familiar. I knew.
It's when they said Bucky, wasn't it?
I'm like, yeah, I wonder if that's Bucky's brother. And I'm like, oh my God. How are you?
Good.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I'm actually really excited to basically come back home. Obviously grew up in Killingley, went to Killingley High School and was athlete. So I played obviously ball, not only at Killingley High School, but at Owen Bell Park. So this is really an opportunity for me to come back. I've got the experience now that really it takes to run a department. We've always looked at, whether I was in Brooklyn or some of the other towns that you talk to, always looked at Killingley's Parks and Rec Department as the upper echelons of really good programming and as far as the parks, second to none. And so I'm just excited to start. I say start, but once that we get going, it's going to be, we're going to be right in the middle of a lot of things that are going to be going on. Summer camp being one of the bigger ones. And so, and then obviously some of the special events that are going to be going on. So just going to hit the ground running and, and fortunately here in Killingley, there's a, I have a good staff, whereas where I'm coming from, Brooklyn, it was me and a couple of office staff. So it's going to be more difficult for them than it is for me to, to adapt because the staff here has been able to keep programming going and I know most of the staff that are here as well. So it's, it's actually nice and I think it'll be a good, a good fit.
Thank you. Questions, comments from council? Mr. Wood?
I always have a comment. I gotta say, you know, I sent the personnel subcommittee, interviewed Bucky. That was probably one of, I enjoyed personnel subcommittee because A, some of the homework's already done and B, it's, it's good to hear from the candidates and he has some great ideas for Killingley. And one of the things that, you know, I was looking for is not just the ideas, but, you know, if programming is no longer effective, do you know when to end it? And Bucky also knows that too. So it's, I gotta say, that's, knowing how to start it and knowing how to end it is probably one of the biggest things that I would look for in somebody that, like that because obviously we want all of our programs to be successful. And like he already mentioned, I mean, his resume was pretty impressive with the amount of years that he's been doing Parks and Rec. And honestly, I didn't even know you could get a degree in Parks and Rec until I saw his, saw his resume. So, I mean, definitely, I would recommend him.
Thank you. Any other comments? Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I just wish you the best of luck. I mean, you've got some big shoes to fill. I mean, obviously Tracy did a great job, so hope you, that you're able to continue that.
Thank you. I will also say, you know, one of the things that even when I left here and went to Brooklyn, I made sure when I became director there, that I left my door open for the community. So if anyone has questions, comments, I'm always available, especially for, even, even to this council. Ideas, you got to have an open mind. Things are constantly changing, times are constantly changing. So that's, that's what I hope to bring and so I'm looking forward to it.
Hopefully we'll run into your events downtown.
Yep.
I will, I will say, speaking about events, I'm glad to see a lot of things like the red, white and blue coming back, considering everything that happened with COVID and, and the impact that that had on town and, and for having events like that, being able to bring members of the community back out. And I know something that, that was something that was greatly missed by a great deal of people in town. And I just hope to continue the events we're having, watch them grow and if you have any suggestions for any other events we could incorporate into the calendar throughout the year, I would love to see us continue to have things like that available for people in town.
Yeah, I, I agree. I mean, especially the special events. Believe it or not, the red, white and blue, when I was here, was summer celebration. So it's very similar. I mean, that goes all the way back to 1994. Hate to date myself, but it's been that long. So it's, again, it's a great event for the community and I'm looking forward to actually being there and, and being part of it, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
We'll now move on in the agenda. Next item up is 15C, consideration and action on a resolution endorsing the submission of a Neighborhood Assistance Act application for the ARC of Eastern Connecticut and United Services Incorporated. Can I get a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made by Mr. Wood, seconded by Mr. Kurtula. Ms. Gloria, if you could go over this, please.
Sure. So this actually came before you last year. This is kind of an annual item that comes before you. These grant applications are being submitted by the ARC and United Services. The application process requires the council endorsement. However, the town doesn't actually administer or receive any of these funds. The, what they're actually, what the grant award is actually given to them is tax credits that they then try and sell to C corporations for C corporations to take the tax credit and then give them the equivalent in financial benefit. There, they struggle, both entities struggle with finding C corporations that actually have a tax, Connecticut tax liability for them to take these tax credits to use as write-offs. So these are the same applications that you saw last year and they, you know, continue to try and raise the funds for, for these, for these projects.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Mr. Wayhead.
So does that money, so we're giving them a tax credit?
We know, the state of Connecticut is. So the state, the grant?
So we have no liability?
We have nothing. It's simply the only, the only thing the town does, the, the grant process requires the town council or the legislative body to endorse the applica, the application and that's it. We have nothing else to do with it. We don't administer it, we don't receive it, we don't oversee it, we do nothing.
So it costs the town nothing?
Nothing. It is simply saying, yes, we endorse the applica, that's it. We do nothing.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
And I will say that the public hearing on this was held, Mary Brom held it earlier and there was nobody that attended the public hearing on it, similar to last year.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on in the agenda. Next item up is council member reports and comments. Mr. Brandelka, would you like to start?
On the Conservation Commission, they're looking at doing some work on Litchfield Avenue. They want to build some type of a bridge over some of the wetland areas and that's going to be a challenge because wetlands, you need permits and whatnot, but they want to make the area more accessible. They're also looking at, possibly at Quandike property, up at the old landfill property, adding a few more trails. Some of the members live next door. They were inspirational, instrumental in adding another loop and they want to add some more up there. And there was something else I can't, that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Wayhead. Okay. Ms. Murphy?
Agriculture canceled, WPCA, monthly budget, they were on, on target, no violations. Buck Street's going to start. Mary went over it in first and second week of June. Suez slash Viola is retiring or getting let go. They're posting the positions for the town. New plant manager, they're, they're posting that. I mentioned that one specifically because they're going to be riding on the grade three assistant plant manager's license for like a year per agreement with DEP, DEEPs, right?
Yeah, I mean, we have a year, but we're not planning on riding on that for a year.
Oh, no. I just meant you have a year.
Yeah, we have a year.
Yep. And let me see, nope, that's all I've got for them.
Thank you. Mr. Wood?
Personnel sub, you just heard from Bucky. Zoning Board of Appeals, they had their organizational meeting. Andrew, I knew I was going to forget his name and I knew I should have wrote it down. Andrew Farah, I think is his last name. My apologies if he's listening. He remains the chairman of the zoning board of appeals and Linda Birch remains the vice chair. Housing, housing, historic district, they have their brochures to print and they postpone the do's and don'ts placard. So that's going to be something I'll be learning more about Thursday. And I did attempt to attend the NECOG meeting and I got all fifteen minutes in and, well, somebody decided to call 911 and I had to leave, so.
Thank you. Mr. Kurtula?
The permanent building committee, we had a meeting, as we talked about earlier, with the, a joint meeting with the board of ed and then we had an extended meeting downstairs with them and they approved the phase one portion of that project. Open space land acquisition was their organizational meeting and we had a discussion on town-owned land for, for the sale of town-owned land and went over the ordinance in relationship to that with some possible changes to that.
Thank you. I attended the personnel subcommittee and Wetlands Water Course was originally scheduled for the same time, but that was canceled.
I did not attend board of ed, but we heard Kyle tonight. NECOG basically went over more ideas about how to spend the COVID money, basically looking at regional projects as opposed to plain miss.
That was for the infrastructure?
Yes.
Not COVID?
Not COVID money, sorry.
Yeah, that's the infrastructure bill and so the Fed and us, the Fed is recommending, they want to see regional project, they want to see, they want to see the project submitted on a regional basis as opposed to town by town because it is a competitive base grant application process. And so the, the state is formulating a process in how the towns would do the submitted.
That's going to be ongoing for a while.
It will.
Yeah. There's nothing like happening very soon with that. So it'll probably be a monthly conversation for a while. And then tomorrow night's conservation, I believe.
Thank you. Ms. Wayhead?
The borough actually had their ARPA public hearing. We vote on that stuff tomorrow. I was actually rather pleasantly, I was actually quite surprised at some of the stuff they agreed to, or they voted to, to put up for consideration. One, one I was pleasantly surprised about was 4H, but they told, I was not expecting them to, to fully fund the town request for the EDC for the art park and they actually did, so. And that was 130,000 and they only have about a million to spend, I know only a million, but some towns don't even have that. But I was actually rather surprised at, considering there's quite a few expenses at the fire station that, that do, could use funds. I was pleasantly surprised at how much they wanted to put back into, into the borough area. Parks and Rec, the end of May had, had their meeting. They've got, Bucky's walking into, into quite the, quite the storm. They've been dealing with a lot of vandalism despite having all the cameras. There was actually an issue with airsoft guns being fired in the park. There was a group of kids that had gotten caught, got taken, they got talked to or the police got involved during the daytime and they actually, the same kits were recorded on the cameras coming back at night and doing more damage. So, I mean, they're, they're in Owen Bell, they're, they're putting graffiti on stuff, the dugouts, the stage. The cameras are helping because they are catching it sometimes, but it's, it's almost like they don't, they just, they just don't care. They're doing, they're actually having issues with smash and grabs and, and things in the parking areas with people, you know, and, you know, it's, they went over Ra-Ras, which if you haven't had a chance to go there yet, actually it's, it's really nice because if you get your brownie sundae at Ra-Ras, it's actually benefiting sugars because sugars is supplying them with the brownies. So it's like, it's kind of like the, the high school buy, or buying produce from local farms, you know, so everybody's working with each other. They, they were talking about the fireworks and the summer concert series and, and anybody concert series, and anybody that's ever worked on putting together stuff like that, particularly paying for bands like on Bike Night and things like that. Bands and that kind of stuff are not cheap. They're running into issues where it's, they seem to keep going to the same businesses for, for support, which makes it difficult. I mean, put on a decent fireworks, you know, you're talking several thousands of dollars, and, and the concert series are the same thing. And right now, because we only have the outdoor venue, I mean, once, once we, we have that indoor capacity, once we have the community center moved, that won't be such a big issue because if we can't have it outside, then we just, everybody will know we're moving it inside, but, so it's, it becomes, you know, a hard thing for them to do. They also were having issues with the athletic fields, the scoreboards, a lot of the coaches, and I, and specifically was mentioned, the athletic director were all talked to about unplugging the control boards for the score signs. They're older, like a lot of the things in town, and there was only so many of these circuit boards, and they were burning through them because they weren't being unplugged, despite being repeatedly asked about that stuff. Just, just a lot of bad behavior on a lot of, lot of, lot of fronts, and that's rather discouraging. What's really cool is they have a new recreation coordinator, as the person that has repeatedly trained year after year, the Camp Wallaby staff and CPR and the first aid. When I saw Gunner Lyons is, is the new recreation coordinator, I remember training him some of the first years as a camp counselor for Camp Wallaby, and now he's, he's stepped up and, and he's taken on this, and he's actually, so he's in the know, and he understands how everything works. So, it's, it's nice that we're bringing Bucky back, and Gunner's taking a more of a lead role, so it's, it's nice to see Killenley kids, you know, stepping up and taking, taking some leadership roles. There actually is a diabetes prevention grant program that they've been hosting at the KPRD. It's called Monitor My Health. It's, it's a six-month program. It actually has been a feeder for a lot of the other programs. Their senior yoga, yoga program that they have at the rec department is totally maxed out. The senior movies are back up to about 50 people a week going to watch, watch those. And they have a senior fitness class on Tuesday morning that's almost full on a, on a regular basis. So, I mean, when, when we talked to Bucky during personal sub, I said, you know, we cover everything from squeaky sneakers to, from one to 101, and it's, it's nice to have, you know, a rec department that's willing to do that. The Jelly Bean Trail, I, I was Peter Rabbit. We, they, they basically ran out of stuff by, in the first hour, and so I think they're, they're looking to maybe just focus in on, limiting it to Killenley residents the next year, but what happened this year is a lot of the other programs canceled. So, then everybody decided, and the other, the other thing with it being held at Owen Bell, which is great, but a lot, what happens is a lot of people, they were, you know, they weren't, there wasn't so much, even though we ran out of candy and stuff, they were still able to get their pictures, and then a lot of, a lot of them just went over and played in the park. So, I, I like having it there. It's a great location. Owen Bell is a, is a great park for them to be using. And, and next Saturday, next Thursday, I expect to have about 30 Camp Wallaby counselors, staff, and we're going to have them all retrained again in CPR and first aid for another year of summer camp.
I do have a question. I had heard something that there was an issue at Owen Bell with the Easter egg hunt, and I guess there was a baseball team trying to play at the same time?
That is some more of the, kind of almost like the scoreboard thing. The baseball team, they had, they'd had rain that week, so a lot of their games got canceled, so they were trying to push their way, we got to do this. And so, the park staff actually had to take a stand and say, no, it's, it's, it's a public safety issue. I, I can honestly tell you, I've never had a line of, I mean, I, in, in my little, little bit of periphery that I could see, I could see that there were, there was a line from the track all the way around to the stage waiting to come take pictures of Peter Rabbit. So, I mean, there was, there was a lot, a lot of people, and a lot of young, a lot, a lot of little kids there. And at the same time, the softball team was trying to use the other, so they had two baseball teams trying to play at the same time as we had a town-wide event.
Had a soccer team going on.
Yeah.
On the track.
And, and the soccer, and, and then the soccer team was, and, and what blew my mind is they were playing, and it was thundering out. I was like, aw.
So, you know, with that, with that event, it's not a, it's not a egg hunt. They go, they form a line, so it's not like they're, you know, trying to utilize a field that somebody was playing on. That event is really, it's not an Easter egg hunt. It's they form a line, and they kind of have different stations that they get a treat, and they have characters, right?
And they have tried to use-
It's a trail.
They have tried to use around, go around the track, which they couldn't because of soccer.
Right, because they have the soccer event going, they had the soccer game going on, so they kind of cut it and did a shorter loop, which I think this year worked a little better only because of the weather. People weren't kind of snaked all the way around with weather, with, you know, with the weather concerns that were going on. But it was a little bit more challenging, and our rec staff, I think, has kind of worked out some of that communication for next year or for future events.
Thank you. Ms. Barkley?
From the planning and zoning meeting on May 16th, the Jolly Commons LLC from 120 Warreagan Road was continued from the previous meeting. They want to excavate next to Jolly Commons, so some of the concerns were to make sure that the storm drainage wouldn't go into the roads if there was a 50- or 100-year storm. So, the soil has good drainage. There's a berm collect, to collect the rainwater, and they also plan to plant wildflowers using New England wetland plants, some high-quality seeds. And also, they'll have a silt fence go up. They'll be grading next to the railroad, and they wanted to address any concerns because they're going to be within 50, 50 feet of the property line. However, there was no response from the railroad. And they also need 150-foot setback from any residential property, and I believe all the properties across the street. The hearing will be continued on June 20th. And the Town of Killenley special permit use under business park, general, commercial, light industrial, mixed use for the creation of the cannabis establishments. Currently, there's supposed to be a 20-foot wide buffer when it abuts a residential district because of odor. However, it'll be, there'll be indoor growing facilities, so Killenley will be able to have one retail and one grow facility, and the drug-free zone will be addressed by the legislature. The current bill is that the establishment would have to be 500 feet from certain items such as churches, schools, and libraries, and the state also regulates the waste from the cannabis. The public hearing will be open until June The melting point welding and fabrication on Warreagan Road is a 2.1 acre. It was changed to light industrial. It requires a special permit because of the size of the building. It's 2,200 square feet. It'll use private well and septic. They're going to create a vegetative buffer from Warreagan and Lucian Avenue. They have a five-year plan for changing the loading dock in the back. They are planning on manufacturing everything inside to minimize the impact on the neighbors, and there won't be that much traffic because there's very few employees, and the deliveries will be one to three times a week. And they also want to have all of the steel will be offloaded in the back and also brought into the building. So, they're going to be, so the plan of conservation and development is that it moves another business into the town. They're reusing an existing building and not developing any additional land. They will be dark sky compliant, and the public hearing remains open. For the Town of Killenley, garage is on rural development. The building can be 1,200 square feet, and the public hearing was closed, and the zone text application was approved. The Housing Authority meeting, they're looking to put some of the checking account balance into short-term CDs to improve the interest income. Birchwood Terrace, still the same issues with the gutters. There's not enough coils to finish the gutters. They haven't heard anything, no response from Green Skies Energy about solar panels. They need to replace the mini splits in many of the units, and they found a company from Woodstock that will do it for 6,000 apiece, and they have a 12-year warranty. They're looking into putting a couple electric car chargers in the area. They had to cut down a tree that was blocking sewer lines, and Connecticut Water is requesting easement to run new water lines from Birchwood Terrace. They will be contacting their attorney. The renters received an electricity rebate based on 30% of their income. They are still looking for somebody to cook on the weekends. They're overbudgeted because they have to pay for travel and eight hours of pay despite, I believe the person's only there for four hours. And there are 178 people on the waiting list looking for affordable housing. They've had 16 deaths in five months, so it's taken time to refurb the apartments, but they currently have one vacancy. And I guess I'll present this to Mary right now. They wanted to know what the town was doing about the homeless population, and what the statistics are on arrests and crimes in Killenley because we've increased the constabulary, and why they're still speeding on Main Street.
So, with regards to the law enforcement, I provide to the town council, and my manager report usually trying to do it on a quarterly basis, the statistics with regards to calls for service and how many are managed by Troop D versus our constabulary. We can see continued growth in that managed for calls for services.
I did give that answer, but they wanted to know if the crime rate has gone down.
There's not really a way to, so, I've, I've had that conversation with our law enforcement, and the federal crime statistics come out only, you know, I think the most recent one is from 2018, which our constabulary was still, you know, we're still in a very small state at this point in time. You really wouldn't see that statistical data for, for a much longer period of time. So, it's not really a benchmark or, or statistic you use right now that is, that provides really any measurement that's useful in determining that, which is why I really try to give the council and the public those call statistics to really understand volume of calls and volume of service used by our constabulary. As far as the homeless population, you know, you know, I think the, all towns struggle with our homeless populations, and, you know, we do contribute to, Access Agency does a winter overnight emergency sheltering program that we participate in to recognizing that, you know, there are a lot of really cold nights that don't need the governor's no-freeze shelter requirements, and yet, still people need to be able to get out of the cold. So, we do try and participate in those programs and in ways that we can provide or, you know, give them access to those services. And if, you know, we have any that do, you know, come to Town Hall, we do try and connect them with those services that might be available to them in order to get into secure housing. So, that's, that's what we, you know, we try and provide to the homeless populations throughout, you know, Killenley and, you know, in the area. Those were the two that I, what was the third one? There was a third one, I know it was, and I'm-
Speeding on Main-
Speeding on Main Street, speeding on many roads.
I actually, I don't think there's speeding on Main Street.
Yes, there is. Don't try and cross Main Street right here to get across the street because you'll almost get killed every time. I do it every day.
You haven't had any problems?
It's, so it's, it's, it's a continued, it's a continued problem that we see on all of our roads, not just on Main Street. And, you know, we try and bring cognizant and recognition to all drivers that they need to be mindful of speed limits. We do have a, we got two signs that are, you know, really kind of reminder signs, you know, they're the, you're going this speed, remember this is what the speed limit sign is. And we did use that up on Maple Street last year, and I think it did have some positive effects up there on Maple Street, and we're looking to deploy that in different areas. Main Street is one of the areas that we're looking at trying to deploy it. The problem is, is that-
Is it the same?
No, the problem really is, is the sightlines in order for it to be able to register a vehicle and not have other obstructions in the way. It's a very congested area, and so that tends to be the bigger challenge along Main Street as to where you could actually put the sign up. But again, it's a reminder sign for people. So, you know, reminder for everyone that, you know, you need to, everybody needs to slow down. We're all in a very big hurry to get everywhere that we're going, and it's not always beneficial. But, yep, we understand that concern, and our law enforcement tries to do what they can as far as speed enforcement.
Now, does our law enforcement have any radar guns?
Yes, we do.
Or?
And they're calibrated on a regular basis. We, we're looking at getting a speed trailer, but based on where the majority of our speed complaints are, a speed trailer wouldn't necessarily be very impactful or useful only because the roads don't have shoulders or have areas that you can really safely pull over for speed enforcement. So, they're trying to address those areas in different ways. But yes, they do have radar detectors, and they do deploy them and use them throughout town.
Now, if a resident were to allow the town or the state police permission to run radar on their property, is that something people could come forward with? Because that was a question that was posed to me this past week.
Yeah, sure. We've had those, and we've, you know, I've always given them to law enforcement, and usually it's, you know, not about necessarily where they're sitting, but they have to then be able to pull somebody over, which is usually down the road somewhere else, and it becomes a hazard not just for the officer, who is now having to be almost in the middle of the road, but also for the vehicle that's been pulled over as well, because a lot of our roads are windy and not, doesn't have great sightlines as well. So, sometimes it's not necessarily a concern about finding where they can sit to, you know, observe, but also where they can, you know, deploy any enforcement as well. But, you know, they are creative in their ways of doing those things, and so they are trying to address, you know, we've gotten a lot of cause of concerns of high rates of speed on areas like Cook Hill and Bailey Hill and those, those areas as well. And they've been trying to get out there to do some enforcement. they've been trying to get out there to do some enforcement.
And the one other part that was brought up, because I got hammered on this one. If the town is aware that there's a speeding problem on a road and the town doesn't do anything to address the issue, does any liability fall onto the town if there are accidents when someone's speeding on that road?
No.
Okay.
No, because, again, you know, the town can only do enforcement as it has capability of doing enforcement, and, you know, you don't know when somebody's speeding on a road, and it's ultimately the driver's responsibility to observe proper motor vehicle laws, traffic laws. So, it's ultimately the driver's responsibility to maintain that. So, if, you know, an accident has occurred because of speed, it's the driver's responsibility.
Because what was brought up was the traffic study that was done on Lake Road for NTE, and the average speed was 41 before the corner.
So, I will say that...
This is 25 mile an hour zone.
We look at, I, I, I look at, every year I meet with representatives from DOT and review crash data and speed data across all of our areas, and we look at, you know, minor crash all the way to, all the way through fatality, and, you know, we know where, where, you know, there is significant accidents that occur largely due to speed. Route 6, all the way up and down Route 6, Margaret Henry Road, the intersection of Route 6, Margaret Henry Road is a, is a, is a high point of accidents largely due to speed. And we look at strategizing around how can you do road improvements? Now, a lot of those roads are state roads, right? So, Route 6 is a state road, town doesn't have any ability to make changes to Route 6, and, and the, one of the biggest traffic calming components to that or, or reduction in accidents would be to change the pitch of Route 6, and it's because of the way the sun comes across that hill, right? You can't see, it's a blinding effect, right? We all know that the state is definitely going to go next year and, you know, reduce the pitch of Route 6 and change all of the intersecting roads that come into Route 6. It's just, it's not a feasible option, right? And so, we can, we try and explore what are, what are within our capabilities, you know, topography is topography, and you can't always necessarily change that. So, what can we do for calming, you know, traffic calming alternatives? And so, I review those every year to determine, you know, how can we approach projects differently in being able to realign a road or improve sightlines or things like that? And we take those seriously when we look at those projects, but it doesn't necessarily negate and, a, doesn't put the town at risk or, or give the town liability. Drivers have a responsibility to drive responsibly under the conditions presented by the roadway in whatever that condition may be.
What, and there was one other piece that was brought up, and, and this is my question as well, because this is something I've wondered. Knowing the issues with Lake Road on, it was identified in the traffic studies where the S-turns were as far as tractor-trailer traffic and it not meeting the WSB 60 through SW 63, whatever the DOT guideline was, if there's a tractor-trailer accident there, when the town knows the town's not, the road's not wide enough for it, is there a liability in that situation?
No.
Okay.
No-through trucking signs on the road, right?
So, the no-through truck sign while it's up there?
Are useless.
Correct.
Yeah, useless, but it's still posted.
No, but it, it doesn't matter. So, that is not an identified no-through truck zone by the state of Connecticut. So, you can put the sign up all you want, it doesn't mean anything. The state doesn't identify it as a no, no-through truck, so you can't prevent trucks from going down that road because it's not identified, and the state has to approve it as a no-through truck.
And also, if the truck has a origination or destination in the town, they're not considered a through truck?
Correct.
So, if they're going in industrial park, they're not a through truck?
Right, it doesn't, so, so again, you know, that's a, that's a feel-good sign that got put up?
Yeah.
To try and, you know, appease people, but ultimately, it doesn't have any enforcement action in it. And, and if anything, it's, you know, it's, it's more of a hindrance to have it even out there because it's not really an approved no-through truck. But it, we don't have any additional liability, roads are roads, I mean, look at, you know, there's plenty of roads in cities all across the country that don't meet minimum, you know, standards of today, there's no way they'll ever be able to get widened because there's buildings on either side of them, and yet, tractor-trailer trucks are down them all the time, right? Because that's a necessary deployment of resources, right? So, no, we don't have any additional liability on that.
Okay. I think Mr. Grandowski was first.
Yeah, getting back to enforcement, on, when we deploy our constables on State Avenue and they pull somebody over, or Bailey Hill Road, and I just happen to be at the right place at the right, I get reprimanded because why are they there? They have better things to do than stop me and give me a sentence. I can't believe how many times I've had that since, you know...
Well, I mean, you know, we get a lot of complaints about speed, and they want Pete, they want our, our law enforcement to go out and do speed enforcement, and then when they have speed enforcement, that happens to them, they, they don't appreciate speed enforcement. It's, it's very typical, and you know, it's, it's something that we see in, you know, many neighborhoods, and it's not just Killenly, it's, you know, all over typically neighborhoods, the residents are the ones complaining of speed, and then when you go and do speed enforcement and it ends up being the residents that get the speed enforcement on them, you know? It's, it's not intended that way, they're just doing speed enforcement as has been requested, it's just, it's, you want to catch the other guy, not...
That's right.
Not yourself.
And my comment was, there's more in the constabulary, how come they're not catching the speeders? What are they doing? I never see them around.
And our law enforcement is very active, so Killenly is the most, is one of the most active departments.
I said it's a huge area for them to...
Yes, and, and we have a very active, we have a very active law enforcement department. Troop D has one of the highest call volumes, and Killenly has the highest call volume in Troop D, so...
Just as a side, and this is unfortunately due to poor legis, this is reactionary legislation which leads to poor legislation. I have had a conversation over this past six months with one law enforcement officer who said that the pulling people over is not what it used to be because of the police accountability bill and the removal of qualified immunity and the restrictions that they have as well. They're hopeful that some of the legislation will be eventually changed to give them back their qualified immunity, but officers are actually hesitant now to pull people over because of this bill. So, this is where, I guess if I were to say to any of our citizens, this is where we need to petition our lawmakers to say, you need to change things so that way their speed enforcement can be a thing again.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move on on the agenda. We have nothing for executive session. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made by Mr. Grandowski, seconded by Mr. Cottula. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? This meeting is adjourned.